The clicker. Uh, so now, now bringing the special meeting of County Belanning Council to order. And the first item is the talking and receipt of the agenda items. I have a.
Two moves.
One move.
Second. Long.
Second. Long moved it. Okay, who, who's?
Tricky.
Second. Long seconded it. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Metaphors, thank you, that's great. Now, the motion to adopt the minutes of special council, the twenty.
Move.
Name of mover for the minutes?
Move.
Counselor Coonst, second by Counselor Whitmarsh. Any errors or misses? All those in favor?
Aye.
Metaphors, motion carries, thank you. Now we'll move on to presentations, and we have a, a presentation on mass timber. And Mr. Suk Johal, Canadian Wood Counsel.
Um, just, Jack, did we do the minutes of the public hearing as well?
Both were.
Both were at the same time?
Did you have?
Okay, thank you.
Both are moved to the side of the table. Okay, well, I'll invite, um, uh, Mr., um. At this with the present. They were there.
So, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Suk Johal, and I'm the Senior Technical Manager with the Canadian Wood Counsel. Uh, I also have some additional titles, uh, the mid-rise and tall technical lead. For these type, for, uh, buildings taller than four stories, uh, across Canada. Uh, with me today is Peter Moonen, which is our National Sustainability Manager. And, uh, Peter Moonen will be doing, uh, will be, uh, presenting, uh, on my behalf. Uh, but I will be ready to answer any technical questions that might arise. Uh, Peter, over to you.
Thanks, Suk. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Just gonna switch screens to my PowerPoint presentation. Now, is that, uh? Is that visible to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thanks very much, uh, uh, and thanks to Suzanne for coordinating with, with Suk and I. We're often difficult to get ahold of, but, uh, she did an admirable job, so thanks very much. What I'm gonna do today is take you a little bit through the whole issues around mass timber, what, what the opportunities are. Um, but first, I wanted to just tell you a little bit about the math, about the Canadian Wood Counsel. I'm sure many of you who have been to LMLGA and, uh, UBCM have seen the Woodworks booth. That is a program, uh, run by the Canadian Wood Counsel, and we are here to educate. We don't sell anything, we don't make anything, we're here really to enable, uh, people to understand the best way to use wood. And that has changed a lot over the last several years, starting with, uh, mid-rise in two thousand nine, and Suk was a national leader on that. And now with tall wood, development of mass timber, requirements for high performance and low carbon, those are all things which, um, have, uh, can be advanced by, by, by wood. And so I'll take you through some of those issues, how they're affecting construction and regulation, and we'll go from there. So this is what we'll cover. Um, I have given Suzanne a PDF of this presentation, so you should all be able to have that afterwards. If you have any questions, uh, my name and number are at the back. So I'm sure we're all familiar with solid sawn timber, heavy timber, if you've been to Europe, seen some of the old churches, or if you have had occasion to go to some of the old buildings in downtown Vancouver, they're all, uh, made with heavy and mass timber. The picture on the right, uh, for example, is, uh, from the pub, uh, Gaston, called Gaston Steamworks in the, the landing building. But there's a whole bunch of new types of mass timber and, uh, engineered heavy timber. Uh, nail laminated, glue laminated, dowel laminated, and then there's a bunch of, uh, strand and, uh, chip, uh, uh, chip engineered wood products. All of these, um, except for the nail laminated timber, bind wood together to make good, efficient use of the material and consistent, uh, qualities around it. The one we're gonna discuss today is cross laminated timber. Uh, it's gained a lot of attention in the last few years, it's what some people refer to as plywood on steroids. It can be built up into a panel that is several inches thick, and it has great stability and great, uh, workability, uh, as we'll, as we'll discover. So, Canada has a, a growing number of heavy and mass timber production facilities. This map, uh, sometimes companies produce one or two products, so, uh, there's not that many stars as, as plants, plants as stars, but some of them produce, uh, one or more products. But it's growing, and, uh, new, new plants are being considered for Ontario, uh, Maritimes, and in Alberta. So what are some of the things that are changing that allow for mass timber to address? There's carbon, energy, technology, um, I, I'm gonna take you through these very quickly, so you get a sense that this is not something that is being driven by the wood producers. It's being driven by, uh, uh, a desire to build better and to build more efficiently and effectively. So I'm sure all of you are aware of issues around carbon. That takes several, uh, several, uh, sort of, um, approaches, both in the building, but also in Canada, because we have such a large forested, uh, uh, region, there's also the land base. So while some people will talk about the advantage of wood as sink, sequester, and substitute, I prefer to also can add a fourth S called sustainable forestry. And as far as Canada is concerned, we have more certified forests in the next seven countries combined, including Russia and the USA. So we do a very good job, it's not perfect because it's run by humans, but we have very, very high levels of forestry performance, um, and it is certified. Carbon legislation also comes into the Pan-Canadian framework and a whole bunch of programs within the federal government and the provincial government, um, to reduce the, the carbon emissions from op- operation, as well as, as you can see here, reduce the environmental impact of building materials. And, uh, all of the major materials sectors, concrete, steel, and wood, have done a really good, uh, job to, uh, identify and ha- in implement programs to reduce the impact of their materials themselves, which is separate from the operational side. So, other regulations around energy performance, uh, the, the B.C. step code has, uh, has really sort of, is driving that, uh, where we have to pay attention to the, uh, energy use of operating our buildings. Um, so that's, there's a, a carbon benefit there, and there's also something that the, the wood sector has, is well aware of. And finally, there's the embodied impact, and this is how much energy or how much impact, water, chemicals, and stuff, comes from making the stuff that we use to build buildings. This is not, uh, it's, it's relatively new in Canada, but it has been in Europe for several years. And it's important that, under what's called a lifecycle analysis, that we have an understanding of just what those impacts are. The embodied impact, uh, sometimes is this, uh, red sphere and the yellow pie, um, is the relative impact of, uh, operational to embodied impacts over the life of the building, um, a conventional building, and that changes with high performance, and we'll get into that. Um, one of the big, uh, things that people are concerned about is, is forestry. Uh, a, a tree, like a, like a forest, uh, like a person starts in a forest, very small, gets tall, and then, like a human being, we get big around the middle, and as we age, we start to die. Trees are very much the same, but they do, the forests do sequester carbon, but they also emit carbon because of rot and decay. So if you take your product and you leave it in the forest, you'll achieve stasis, but if you build things with it that are long-lived, you'll have an increase in the amount of carbon that you've locked away. However, if you also use that product to replace other emit, uh, high emitting products like steel or concrete, you get an even bigger carbon benefit. So that's sort of the, the gist of, of the importance around carbon with respect to, to wood. Um, lifecycle analysis too compares different systems. Here is a steel and concrete system that does a certain job, you can see it's got sixteen hundred and thirty-three kilograms of CO2 equivalent emissions. The same job performed, this is in Quebec, has, uh, in wood, has an emission of two hundred and seventy-six. Now, this isn't to say that wood is the only material that can be used, but if we have an understanding of what the impacts are, we can start to make choices which reduce the embodied and operational impact. And in fact, this is also captured in the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change of, uh, two thousand, two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen, and reiterated in two thousand nineteen. Grow more trees, use more wood. So I'll talk about those embodied impacts. In year one, all of the impact is from, uh, operational, is from embodied. In year twelve, sometimes it's, uh, it's equal to the operational, and then in year eighty, the vast majority is operational. So, we, but that's predicting that the building will last eighty years, but things change. So, uh, the Energy Step Code, as you can see, is, uh, i- is coming in B.C. and in, in the, uh, National Building Code. And it's, it's leading to buildings like this, which is at the foot of Launceston North Band, it's an industrial, commercial, it's a commercial, um, and, uh, office building, it's got a restaurant from the bottom, it's mass timber, and it's passive, so it will use eighty percent less energy to u- to, uh, to operate, and also uses a much less carbon, uh, to, to build. So, uh, typically, from a passive building, most of your operational impact after eighty years is, most of your impact is embodied, not operational. And that compares to the total energy use of a conventional building. So the building systems that we choose to build and the energy performance level do play a long-term role in the embodied impacts. Technology has also changed, uh, the whole aspect around fire, uh, around tall wood has been based on the ability of the building to withstand fire. Uh, large, uh, lots of research has gone on to this. This has a picture on the far right, uh, of a fire test that was done at the Surrey Fire Training Centre a year and a half ago. Uh, Suk, I think there were some folks from Langley that were there, and it's just to show people how wood does burn. It forms a char layer, but the, but the bulk of the wood, and the wood you see there has been after an hour of testing, the wood that can support the building is still there. So that was a critical factor in determining, uh, the success of tall wood buildings. The other things that are happening are, are construction capacity. There's trade shortages everywhere, and mass timber allows for industrial, uh, production. It's easy to machine, um, uh, it, it requires fewer people to install. Uh, just in British Columbia alone, by neck, by the end of next year, we'll be thirty-three thousand people, uh, trades positions short of what we need to, for our construction sector. That may change now because of the economy, but still, there's not as many people going into the trades as thirty years ago, and it's leading to a shortage, which also compromises our productivity. If you look at this, the construction sector has one of the worst productivity gains over the last fifty years. Um, they recognize this, they're doing things to transform this, but here's where an opportunity arises for wood, because it uses a lot less labor to get the same structure, and that's because it can be machined well, and, and it can be machined accurately, so you get a better performing building as well. Wood product technology has been one of the biggest factors. Uh, this is a CNC machine, which basically will cut holes, it will drill, it will cut out notches, um, uh, all, all mechanically, uh, which would take hours and hours for an individual to do that with, uh, with handheld equipment. Um, as well, the, the technologies around resin and presses and machinery, as well as dot design and parametrics and energy modeling, those are all technologies which have changed, and wood has, has, uh, the ability to fit into those technologies which are now being used by architects, engineers, designers, energy modelers. People ask, why is wood so good in energy performance? It's because it's a very poor conductor of heat or cold. So it acts like, as, like an insulating blanket. But the other thing that we're all facing, um, is the, the need for affordability as we densify our cities, but we still wanna make sure that we meet the environmental performance requirements. This is a project on Fraser Street at, uh, was it fifty-seventh, I think, Suk, um, called, uh, uh, oh, Spire Landing. It is a passive house building, it's six stories, it's made with conventional light frame timber, um, and it's also part of, it's, it's affor- it's affordable. So we're seeing this more and more. Um, some of the uses for heavy and mass timber, there's an NLT shaft on the left, but a, but a CLT shaft on the right. These, uh, elevator shafts are fire resistant, they're strong, they're stable, um, and they can be installed very, very quickly. Um, with regards to densification, these are a couple of projects, uh, Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency and B.C. Housing are involved with. These are high-rise buildings, um, they are mass timber, they are high-performance. Um, and as you probably, when you're dealing with B.C. housing, B.C. housing doesn't come to you and say, hey, we've got way more money than we need, build us the most expensive building. So this has been, uh, developed, these are increasingly on the, on the, uh, on, on the market, and it's, it's because of the, the, the multiple benefits of building with mass timber. Here is a curtain wall, it's a mass timber curtain wall, it, this is, uh, also for the exterior of the building. These kinds of things allow, uh, high-performance perfo- of, of a building on any structure, whether it's wood, steel, or concrete, because it's essentially putting a blanket around the building. And this is a, a system that is being developed in Vancouver, um, with consultants from around the lower mainland to, uh, design a prefabricated facade or curtain wall system. So this is where mass timber is going. But where can it take us? Uh, this is a project, if you have questions, Suk is the expert on these projects, this is on Vancouver Island. This project was chosen because it was cost competitive. It's beautiful, it's high-performance, but the tipping point was that it's cost competitive, and that's in Langford. There's another project on Vancouver Island, it sort of culminates on mass timber, prefabrication, high performance, um, and affordability, and that's this project in Esquiremont, B.C., twelve stories, slumming, sloping up the hill. And, um, it, it, it has garnered a lot of tension because it is, as, uh, what the Vice Chair of the Energy Committee and the IPCC said, it's, uh, a triple carbon win, operational energy, avoiding embodied impacts from carbon, uh, some steel and concrete, capturing and storing carbon, and also it uses low-carbon energy from our grid. So, um, people often say, well, you know, how can, um, uh, wood endure? Uh, this building is over thirteen hundred years old, it was designed by people who knew what the building was going to face. And that's what we at Woodworks are trying to do, is to teach people how to build buildings that can last a lot, a long time, um, by choosing materials, choosing the systems, and choosing the, the durability design that, uh, that makes these buildings both, uh, beautiful and, and long-lasting. And finally, uh, I, I'm often asked, why would I build with wood? And so I have to, um, say, look, uh, if, if I were to invent a material that was all of these things, it's a carbon sink, renewable, recyclable, reusable, organic, cleans the air, cleans water, provides oxygen, and gives us the material that is all of these other factors, strong, lightweight, flexible, diverse, attractive, easy to use, I'd be quite rich. But, uh, we already have trees, they give us wood. So the question maybe shouldn't be, why wood, but if not wood, what? What are we gonna build if we're still gonna build? And I think mass timber has the opportunity to fulfill all of our structural expectations, our comfort expectations, our, our costs, and our renewables expectations. So, um, I know that I've zipped through that really quick, um, but if you have a question, um, please, that, you know, that doesn't get answered in the discussion, please feel free to reach out to me, Suzanne will give you a copy of this, these addresses are at the back, and I will turn it back over to the chair.
Well, thank you very much, uh, pretty, uh, pretty interesting presentation, what you can do with wood. Uh, I've got several counselors with questions, uh, we'll start with Counselor Richter.
Uh, yes, thank you, very interesting, uh, presentation. I had a question with regards to the types of mass timber that you showed us at the beginning, and their respective fire resistances. Um, I'm wondering, are there some of those products that are more fire resistant than other products?
Um, the fire resistance around wood, and Suk, I know, will probably chomping at the mic to get in this, but generally, it's based on the thickness of wood. Wood burns at a very predictable rate, point six millimeters per minute. And so the thicker mass timber products of any type are gonna have greater fire resistance. The key factor is that the engineer has to design the building so that after a certain amount of time, let's say two hours, there's still enough structural wood there to support it. So you may have different thicknesses of different materials in different applications, but it's based on the fact that wood will not just flare up. It, it's not temperature sensitive, it's time sensitive. So the architects and engineers have to design the extra char layer and the burn-off layer, so that after two hours or however long, it's still standing.
Okay, so I, I don't know a whole lot about wood, but, um, it would seem to me that particle board would probably burn faster than pure wood?
Well, the, uh, there, there's only a couple of products, uh, that I showed there, there's oriented strand board, laminated strand lumber, parallel strand lumber, and laminated veneer lumber. None of them are particles, they're all strips or chips or, or slabs of veneer. Um, and they all use, uh, an, a structural grade glue. A lot of the particle board that you see in, in some of the do-it-yourself stores, that is not a structural material. So anything that is structural has to be able to meet the fire resistance requirements in design, and it has to have a glue that is both stable and non-offgassing and water-resistant. So there's two different product types, um, and it's completely understandable why you would say, oh, that, you know, the particle board gives me the willies. I wouldn't need that for structural either, so don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Coonst.
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. Um, I just had a question about, uh, the certified forest. Could you define, uh, what a certified forest is, and how that might differentiate between, um, in other regular forests?
Okay, well, uh, first of all, Canada has about two, two hundred and twenty million hectares of forests that are sort of, uh, uh, available for commercial logging. Hundred and sixty-some-odd-thousand-million hectares are certified, some of them double or triple certified. Um, certified, there, there's two key aspects, is that the certification, uh, assures that the land from which the forest, the tree was cut, is going to grow back as a forest. All of the systems have that. Um, there's no sense in converting a forest to agriculture, or a parking lot, or a different type of, of land use. That's, uh, that's under land use change, and is not certifiable. All three systems used in Canada, SFI, CSA, and PEFC, have, at a minimum, must conform to the, uh, to the regulations of that province. Um, and most of them are generally better by having better reforestation programs, better soil management programs, better wildlife programs, cultural programs. So, Canada, to be a member of the Forest Products Association of Canada, of which ninety-five percent of the lumber producers are, you have to be certified. Otherwise, you're not allowed to join. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Ferguson.
Yes, Peter, man, you've been doing this for, oh, five years or so now, a long time no see. Anyway, I guess, I did wanna say to you, you know, in your, uh, and it's quite a bit of information you provided. Uh, I'm interested in, uh, number one, two things, number one, trade shortages, and I know that what, what trades, in particular in the wood, wood business. And the, and the second, as you know, we live in the West Coast, uh, our, our houses and, and decks and porcs, you know, they get all that water, you know, and gets in the, uh, in the structure, you know, you know, rots or molds. Have you got any comments on that kind of thing regarding your struc- superstructure?
Um, uh, so the, two aspects of the issue around wood and water, um, uh, we need to design our buildings so that they, if they get wet, they don't stay wet. So the issue of thirty years ago now, I guess, the building envelope issues, um, water was getting in to the wall, but it couldn't get out. So there wasn't ventilation, there wasn't movement, um, so, so basically, the wood was sitting there with all this water, and, uh, wood will, will rot when it gets, when it stays wet. Um, I have a cedar deck, um, the external woods, like cedar and sometimes Douglas fir and the treated woods, what they do is they remove the ability of the, of the, the bacteria to, to eat that. Um, and also, they are exposed to the weather, so they get wet and then they dry out. So that's the biggest consid- consideration. I have a presentation on designing for durability that addresses the water, but key factors, the four Ds, are divert the water away, uh, drain it if it does get wet, let it dry if it does get wet, and choose durable materials. So those are the four Ds of designing for durability. Um, and, and you get exposure to sun, you get exposure, exposure to wind and rain and sand and stuff, but, but, uh, the, the principal factor is water, and if we don't dry it out, it's gonna rot. So that's why we have to design with that known.
So, and second question was job shortages.
Okay, um, uh, the, the job shortages are across all the fields, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, you, you name it. One of the things that we're finding, um, there are, there's a growing number of companies that are specializing in, in mass timber installation. Um, and their, their crews are much smaller. For example, on the, the seventeen-story, uh, on one concrete platform at UBC Brock Commons, nine people were involved in, in building the entire structure. Uh, had that been concrete, there would have been fifty-four on the site all day, every day. So, they, the, that reduction in at least one trade, um, enables that material to be used quite extensively, because that crew can do a lot more work and build a lot more square footage. Um, but it is an area too where, uh, we've been, Suk and I have been working with, uh, community colleges and trade schools across the country to have them understand that mass timber, it's coming. You need to equip your carpentry students and your, even your steel installers, uh, with this, uh, with this technology, so they understand how to build it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Thank you, Peter, good to see you, and, uh, I'm sorry we will miss each other at LMLGA this year. Um, so, so what are the, what are the holdups for the challenges that face municipalities? Tricky, I can see you, I can see the president. Can he would? Uh, I mean, because, like you said, uh, in your last slide, why wouldn't you use wood now with this technology that's out there? You've got all of these things looking for you. But are there some special issues that face municipalities on how to, how to deal with this, through our staff, et cetera? Does it require a special consult, or, 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 really, there must be some challenges. Maybe you can help outline them for us so that we can get over them.
Well, Bob, uh, it, it's a great question, because I don't know that it's, uh, the, if you don't understand how to build something, um, you wouldn't, you wouldn't venture down that route. Likewise, in fairness to the building inspectors, if they haven't seen something before, if it's brand new, um, I'd be leery too. Uh, so, so what has to happen is there's a, there's an education, uh, component, so that they understand the system of construction, how it conforms to what they, as a building inspector, needs to have of safety, security, you know, um, you know, the, the integrity of, of the building itself. Um, the, because they're concerned with onsite and after, so their focus is on the occupancy. So if they don't understand it, uh, i- it's, there's gonna be sort of a, well, wait a minute, uh, I, I don't understand this. So that's where people like Suk have been a big help to the Building Officials Association. Um, when the province, uh, advanced the twenty-twenty Building Code, they went out to the province, to the, uh, to the local governments and said, look, this is an opportunity, but you have to demonstrate to us that you've got the internal capacity among your inspectors to, to, to validate these buildings when they come in, and that's what they did. Um, so it really is about education, educating your staff so that they're comfortable, um, and, and, and understand what is being sought.
So, Peter, those fabulous examples that you showed us, I think you said Langford, there was one, and, and Nanaimo another, so there's several buildings in the area. Did, did the municipalities have to pass special, uh, bylaws or requirements to allow that to happen, or?
No, be, um, basically, they chose to accept the National Building Code, twelve-story portion of the National Building Code, and Suk, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, they chose to, to accept that in advance of the British Columbia government accepting it. Um, and, and it was with the approval of the government, but saying, prove to us that you as Victoria, or, or Machosen, or Langford, or Nanaimo, have the ability to properly vet these buildings from a structural and safety point of view. So there was a list, those communities sent it into the province, demonstrating their capacity, and the province said, okay, you can, you are now authorized to accept twelve-story buildings. They didn't have to pass a bylaw because it's, it's into the B.C. Building Code, which is now applicable to them. Vancouver was an exception because they have their own building code.
They're always an exception. Anyway, good to hear, and hopefully we'll have a building landing one day, thank you.
Suk's the man will help your folks.
Yeah, thanks. Counselor Anderson.
There, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, thank you very much for the presentation, um, it's very, very interesting. Um, I had similar questions with respect to what some of my colleagues have brought forward. Um, I've just been, as long as I've known about it, a, a real supporter of this next step forward, because I think that all of the regulatory initiatives are heading towards low carbon, and so if you can embody carbon and sequester it, as well as have a, a building type that does not produce as much carbon, such as concrete, for example, I think that these are all win-win situations. I'm on the Climate Action Committee for Metro Vancouver, and so their, the fifty plan is often in consideration of, um, of our building. So, uh, what I have wondered, um, the one thing I think, um, if you could comment upon, one thing that I've seen in the literature about it is that, in terms of building, it's less intrusive on already-built developments, because once the panels come on-site, they can be loaded onto a flatbed truck and erected with, um, a hoist or, or a lift, a hydraulic lift, rather than having all of these other moving pieces that you'd have with, um, with the stick construction. So can you kind of just comment on the benefit of that?
Well, uh, I guess, i- i- when I look at the mass timber, um, you're getting a whole wall that gets put in place. So it's, all the cutouts for windows, for connections and stuff are done in the factory to consolidate the waste. And then you ship these flat pack, and they get installed, uh, very, very quickly by a, by a, a, a low, uh, basically by a crane. But you're right, you're not, you're not bringing raw materials, I mean, uh, people are, are strongly advocating for prefabrication because it consolidates waste, it reduces labor, it gives you better. I mean, people are strongly advocating for prefabrication because it consolidates waste, it reduces labor, it gives you better performance. And it takes a lot less time disrupting the neighborhood, requiring less parking that is gone, less traffic disruption. And that's what mass timber is. It's it's basically delivering what a stick-built wall without all the sticks. And in in tall buildings, it's delivering that instead of a concrete precast panel. It is very much lightweight compared to to a concrete platform. And it's fast and it's quiet. The Brock Commons, when it was being built, I was out watching it one day and I went to grab a coffee and I asked the person, the barista, I said, so how's the noise? And and he said, oh, we don't really hear that, except when the concrete pumper truck is there. The bigger noise is the metal roof that's being built on the gauge towers. So because, so it's it's very quiet. It's done with cordless screws. So for the screwdrivers. So it's less disruptive. And so so there's a lot of benefit. It's not for every building yet. Let's be clear, we think it has a lot of potential. But people have to, people have to get used to it, they have to feel comfortable with it. And as was pointed out, let's have our building inspectors competent and confident in 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 building like this.
Yep, one of the things that was highly instructive to me is to go online and see YouTube videos. And I think it really captures in some ways the, especially the time lapse, the the way in which these buildings go together, it's very revolutionary and so different than what we're used to. But I think it really helps to understand what what is possible with the, as you've mentioned, the appropriate use of this building structure. I I just want to follow up on what Counselor Long, I think, was asking, but in a different way. So he was talking about what are the obstacles or impediments to use this model in our communities? I'm I'm wondering if you're aware of any communities that have incentivized this in any way to prefer potentially, under the right circumstances, this this kind of construction as opposed to the other kinds?
I'm not aware of any communities that have said, hey, if you're building a mass timber building, we'll approve it faster. I know that there are several communities that want higher performing buildings. And they, I think the city of Vancouver even says, if if you're building a passive house or, you know, ultra-high-performance building, we're dedicating some staff time to approve those buildings in advance of conventional ones. That's really the choice of municipalities. And if a local government is saying, hey, we want to have more passive buildings, they can incentivize by telling a developer, you can wait three months for your permit, or you can get it next week if you're going to go passive. But that's a choice that local governments have to make based on their own priorities. And some of these buildings, they're, you know, because B C was well on its way to advancing twelve-story because of the Whiddock Building in Prince George and Brock Commons, there were a fair number of people who were already had projects that they were contemplating to to go wood. So there was a bit more of a, I guess, a demand in British Columbia. Suk, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, no, it just, like you said, we we spent some time educating everybody in the design community and in the construction pyramid. I know for myself, I was focusing primarily on Southern Vancouver Island. But these types of buildings want to to establish the cost effectiveness of them, but also to make a bold statement that if we can do tall wood in the in the worst seismic region of Canada, and it works, it'll work anywhere. And so that's what we were primarily focusing, Victoria swam up with with all that seismic activity. Langley, compared to Langford, in terms of structural design, is is a lot less. So I'm very confident in in our model and in our strategic thinking. Again, let's do, let's let's get Vancouver Island first, and then we'll bring it over to the Loma and that. So that's that's primarily what we're doing.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson.
Can you really quickly point out that, I think, Peter, you're aware of this, that are, I'm not preaching to the converted beast. Most people already know that the Langley Event Centre was an agreement between the provincial government ourselves and with that concept of having wood in place.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that was, when when the Woodworks program started, there were incentives that came about for local governments around the province that the province was funding. We didn't fund it, but the province did. And then the province brought in the Wood First Act, and I was often asked, is there additional money for that? And Gordon Campbell was the premier, and at that time, it wasn't that you would get extra money if you didn't, if you built with wood. But there was a notion that if you didn't build with wood, you might not get money, which is sort of the reverse. Personally, I think that the Wood First was was a really great way to create awareness. And we have architects and engineers who say, let's choose the best material for the for the for the function that it needs to have. And what what has happened since then is there've been some new wood materials that have have proven that they can be the best material for certain functions. Again, it's not a perfect material, no, no building material is. If there were, Suk and I wouldn't have jobs.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Won't see any further questions, appreciate your presentation, and I look forward to seeing some twelve-story wood buildings here.
And feel free to reach out to either Suk or me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Bob, for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to delegations, and the first delegation is Cityside Winery. And wait for the Ms. Bauer to invite them in.
Yeah, can you hear me? I forgot how to put my hand up.
Okay, so in the bottom, at the bottom, if you click, moving mouse to the bottom, this is participants, and there's like a number twenty beside.
Okay, yeah.
Click that on, and there's a list of everybody, right at the bottom of that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem. The delegation's on, okay.
Hello, hello, and thank you to the respectable mayor and members of the council for allowing me to participate in this meeting. My name is Mina, and my husband, Homan, and I are the owners and directors of Cityside Winery. We incorporated our company in two thousand thirteen and have been in operation since two thousand fifteen near downtown Vancouver in Mount Pleasant area, pretty much in front of Olympic Village. As a family, we have been quite involved in all aspects of the business. And we have been quite fortunate to form a joint venture with another family business in Langley and are set to move to Langley. We originally requested hours of operation for our lounge to be until midnight. And in the previous meeting, it was approved until ten P M. We understand that there was no community objection to our project. And we also submitted additional letter of letter for reconsideration on April twenty first. Originally, we have been in business since two thousand fifteen, and we have been already operating since midnight. We have excellent relationships with our community, with with the city of Vancouver and in our new location as well, as well as with the community that we have been operating within. Although we are in the business of winemaking, we are also in the business of hospitality. However, we're not running a full restaurant business, basically. This extended hours for our lounge really allows us, and and it's often a necessity for a lot of family and corporate events and those organizers that they wish to be accommodated. It's also often a necessity based on our experience to be able to make a safe transition for all of our clients from our venue to their homes. We already have, and we have been actually practicing a very robust program for safety of our clients. We have had child service, we have had Safe Ride Home programs and all that. On the other side, I understand the reservations of some of the respectable members of the council that some may want us to be actually operating in the area for a while, and so our behavior be more observed, and then we get the vote of confidence, basically. I would just wish to bring this to your attention that applying down the road for extending hours of operation would be a costly and time-consuming process. We have already been through this process with city of Vancouver and successfully proved ourselves to a community of over five thousand people who are living around us. We believe that this is an additional cost to the taxpayers and probably not in the best interest of the public. We also understand that other comparable wineries in the area are already operating until eleven thirty P M. And we are hoping that it's fair for us to also be included in that cohort. We understand that if the respectable members of the council are not prepared to grant our original request for operating until midnight, granting operation until eleven thirty would be the next most suitable option. We believe that our business would be a valuable addition to the community. And regardless of your decision or your opinion, we respect and we honor your decision and your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Two councillors with questions, Counselor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much for your delegation. Do you currently live on the property?
We don't. We actually, our business was out of Vancouver. And we unfortunately lost our our lease because our landlord, we recently noticed that they applied to city of Vancouver to develop that parcel of land, and they are real estate developers. And and our business building basically had structural issues, and unfortunately, they were not prepared to invest on those, you know, rectifying the issues, and we had to actually move out.
Are you currently producing wine on that property?
We don't. We are hoping that we are able to actually build the building first, and then we move out from our current location to Langley.
Okay, so have you been in the area, have you seen the area?
My husband and I have been fortunate enough to build some connections. We, as I said, we are entering into a joint venture with a business that has established roots in the community already. And they are actually a family who are also living in part of that land that we are hoping to develop and build our winery over.
And what business is it that they run?
It's Ridley Fuels.
Ridley Fuels, okay. I guess the concern that I have is that there's a big difference between downtown Vancouver and rural South Langley, a huge difference.
Sure.
And while the business that you're operating in downtown Vancouver may be appropriate for downtown Vancouver, I'm not convinced that the same business is appropriate on rural South Langley lands where the A L C has permitted on-farm sales primarily to showcase the products that are being sold as opposed to using cheap agricultural land to develop eating and or drinking establishments. But thank you very much for your delegation today, I appreciated receiving it.
Thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, thank you very much for your presentation today. I really appreciate your respectful request and the reiteration of your interest in ensuring that in your move to Southern Langley, that you are able to facilitate your business plan. I just want to follow up and underline some of Counselor Richter's concerns and to establish for you why it is that I'm being challenged by the request for extended hours. And I understand that other local establishments that you could refer to may have hours that are longer than the ones that we originally established to end at ten o'clock. But that's part of the challenge, I think, of looking at each application on its own merits to consider who the neighbors are, what even the topography is, because sound travels in different ways depending on where you are. So there, the impacts are not always the same. And I also agree that having had a successful business in Mount Pleasant in Vancouver is not really transferable to an experience in rural South Langley. Because one of the things that you would have in an urban environment is much more oversight by bylaw enforcement, which the township, I believe, would be challenged in case there were issues. So I I err on the side of caution to make sure that we're finding the right balance between introducing a new business model into an area and making sure that those who are already existing there have the right to peaceful enjoyment of their rural property. So I understand that you don't want to go through the time and the expense of making application. But I actually prefer the idea that you establish a good working relationship with your neighbors first and then reapply. Because that way, there is more of a sense of certainty that I would have in particular to make sure that everybody is acting in accordance, which, you know, we find the balancing of the interests there. Because I do note that this is not a problem that we only have or somewhat challenging in South Langley. There's many other communities that have farm gate operations and wine tasting and other things. And some of them have actually been required, for their own reasons, to go into a bylaw situation to create conformity. Because you're addressing an issue that I feel has to be addressed at some point, is the degree to which, when we review these applications, we are making consistent decisions, more or less. And so that may be something that would have to come to township for consideration, is to have some rural bylaws having to do with winery and other venues that are now introducing something that was never the case in the township before. It's an evolving business model. So I just hope that you can understand that there is, you know, some degree of oversight that we like to keep to make sure that we are correctly balancing those interests. And so thank you very much for making your presentation.
Thank you.
So and just want to follow up on those two last comments. There, you know, really weren't questions, but I think to give you an opportunity, if you could perhaps explain the neighborhood that you're in in Mount Pleasant. I know it's not rural, but it's and it's not downtown, but maybe that would help, you know. Two members of council, council have expressed their concerns that it's not the same, but I know that there are some similarities in that you're a residential area, maybe you can help clarify that for council.
Thank you so much for expressing your concerns, and and I respect that. Definitely, regardless of where we have been operating in the past or will be in the future, one of the most important aspects of a business is proper oversight from within. And as a matter of fact, because we are a family and we have been involved in all aspects of it, we never actually hired managers so that we sit back and just look and see what's happening. We have never had any kind of bylaw infractions or any kind of issues with our regulatory bodies, with the community, or with or the city itself. I understand that in the past, we have been or operating as a commercial winery. And currently, as we're moving to Langley, Langley, we are hoping to be able to develop the land into vineyards and and contribute to the economical situation of the area as well. And basically, adjust our business model in a way that we can be a good fit for the neighborhood and and for the city itself. The one strength that I can reiterate again is our business operation is based on family involvement and another very commercial model. And in the past, even though we have been operating until midnight, we, it was never a matter of regularity. It was used as an opportunity whenever we had large events in the venue that they wished to have some extra time to be able to exit the venue safely without us going over business, sorry, the city bylaw. So we had to be mindful of that. This has been the only time that we have been using it. Pretty much, we have always given the last call around eleven P M, and people have been out by eleven thirty. We have never promoted consumption of alcohol as much as we have been promoting community engagement and being a place for gathering and and connecting with each other.
Thank you. I've got three more, we should wrap it up. Counsel Kunst.
Hi there, yes, thanks for your presentation here. I just have a question about when do you anticipate opening? And will you be opening the winery before you're living there? I guess that would be the first question.
So I think the application has been forwarded to the city of, to the township of Langley for getting initial permits for us to be to start construction. So we are anticipating, as soon as we get those permits, within six months, we would be able to actually have the building ready. we would be able to actually have the building ready and make a transition. We also need to develop the land into vineyards and we have some plans in place currently. So this is our hope that within six months to perhaps a little bit longer, maybe eight months, we would be able to be operational in the area.
And how many, so you're gonna have, are you gonna have a winery type lounge? How many people do you anticipate serving in your establishment?
I think the amount of people that we have been allowed currently is about hundred thirty people, which includes the tasting room, lounge and patio.
And do you anticipate a hundred and thirty people being there every night? Or would that just be the maximum that you could see maybe just a few times of the year or?
Definitely in the past, we have never had this number of people in our premises, even though we had about a hundred people capacity in our lounge and tasting room in the past. Definitely, we are mindful of how we are actually managing the situation. In the past, for example, when Microsoft or Amazon, they had their client appreciation times in our premises, we demanded that they bring their own managers and event organizers so that we have better oversight. That was the only time basically that we had about hundred people on our premises. We do not believe or think that this is gonna be a regular thing in our business at all.
So the viability of your business, how much would depend on you being open until, you know, for another hour and a half? Does it make a really big difference or is it just, you know, speculation at this point?
Well, it will make a big difference in the sense that if we are not able to offer that opportunity to our event organizers, we might lose those businesses for sure.
Right.
Because now our premises are quite different in terms of layout with our previous place. Over there, we were not able, for example, to accommodate weddings. Here, this is now a possibility for us.
So do you have an established clientele, like you have people that would come back? That you, you know, that you could book knowing that you have those hours or?
Thank you for asking this question, for sure. In the past, at least five years or four years and a half that we have been in business, we have had a very established network of clients, especially in our events and hospitality section. On our Instagram and social media, we have about six thousand clients following us, still being in touch. It's important for us to maintain this relationship with them, being able to be of service to them as well. So thank you so much. I think this is a very important part of our business.
Okay, thank you for coming and.
Thank you.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm just, a lot of good points made. I'm, I am concerned about coming from Mount Pleasant to rural Langley. There's no grapes grown yet. I'm just concerned about being on A L R land, or I don't know if it's rural land. I don't know how it's owned. I just can't see a problem from ten o'clock to, to eleven thirty or even midnight. I think you can get people home safely at ten B M as well as you can get them home safely at eleven. I just, what I'm, I, I just am concerned that we, if you have, if you're growing grapes and you're making wine, you can have an establishment that you can sell them. You can sell it, you can brag, you can have a tasting room and everything right now, right there. But I think that, I hate to say this, but putting the cart before the horse. When, I'm just, in your situation, you need to go somewhere else now. I just would wonder if moving, moving a restaurant or facility like this onto rural land without having anything to show, to showcase, say, this is what we've made, we've grown and we're gonna serve it to you in Langley. And I don't see why you can't do that. So, you know, before ten, before, you know, that extra hour and a half time. I just, it's, just, those are comments of mine. Thank you very much.
May I please respond?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your concerns. I appreciate that. So in our previous business model as a commercial winery, obviously, our main focus has been on wine making. We never had a vineyard attached, obviously, being in the middle of the city. However, our business model revolved around making network and partnerships with grape growers across B C. So we regularly purchased grapes from those grape growers, oversighted all those vineyards and made trips across B C. My husband himself is a trained winemaker. He has been very much involved in viticulture aspect of the business. So we would bring these grapes to the city of Vancouver. We do, we did all the processing on site and fermented and everything. We have already several established brands of wine. And we understand that coming into the rural area, establishing a vineyard doesn't happen overnight, obviously. It takes time. So we still have that business model to support us in, in order to integrate us and introduce us into the community by showing them and showcasing our brands and things that we have done. And probably in the first couple of years or more so of the business, while the winery still is not quite, the vineyards are still not quite grown and operationalized, we still might need to continue our previous business model until they're more established. So that's.
I hear, but I just, my concern is the hour and a half or two hours from ten o'clock till midnight. That's, I'm just, I can't see that getting in your way. And I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richter, you have another question?
Yes, just some follow-up questions. So the land that you're, that you're establishing it on at two nine seven four two twenty-four street, is that, is that A L R land? Is that?
Yes, it is.
It is A L R land. Now, you mentioned weddings. Does the, does the A L R permit weddings?
Well, this is something that we need to still explore. But however, I mean, the lounge business does allow gatherings and events. So this is something that pretty much falls under the event venue, being able to. I mean, this is a, what, from what I understand, that weddings, holding weddings in the vineyards, in the wineries is a big tradition.
Yeah, but we've run into this problem before with other farm establishments in A L R land wanting to hold weddings and they're not permitted to do that. So even though your liquor license may permit you to have weddings, that doesn't mean you're gonna be allowed to be able to do that on A L R land. Also, in Mount Pleasant, are there, is it well-served by transit routes and taxis?
That's a good question. Yes, it is. That's, that's why we also, in addition to that, we are offering shuttle service, making sure that when we are moving to a less served area by transport, we are also able to offer our own services for community.
So, so you will be offering shuttle services then from Langley into Vancouver?
Yes, we would, to several destinations, basically.
Okay. And of the wines that you showcase, are any of them, are the wine relationships that you have with B C winemakers, are any of them Langley wines?
I do not believe that they are. They mostly are coming from Okanagan and Semenkemen Valley. We are hoping to establish better relationships in the area once we're established ourselves here. This is a possibility down the road, for sure.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, under the agriculture land commission, farms can have ten events a year. And then under the winery designation, Mr. Backen, I know there's, it's a different zoning. They can hold, if with improper designation, they can hold more events than ten. Is that correct? Yeah, so they're, so they are able to hold events such as weddings, a minimum of ten. Any farm can have a minimum of ten events a year. And then with the winery, they can hold more, just to clarify. But I see no further questions. So thank you very much for your delegation and.
Thank you.
I appreciate you providing us more clarity. Thank you. Okay, the next delegation is Hub Langley. Let's wait for Ms. Bauer to invite them in.
Okay, so are we ready with that delegation? And did you wish the camera on?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, so the delegation's there. Just wait for the camera to come on. And you can begin anytime. Just provide your, your name. Your name would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll just have to say yes to the question when it comes up with the delegation. You're for the camera.
All right, good.
There we are.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Geraldine Jordan and I'm here presenting on behalf of Hub Langley. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, municipalities all over the world are reallocating road space to keep pedestrians and cyclists safe while maintaining physical distance. Ms. Heather Drew from the North Shore News aptly frames what we have all noticed on the ongoing basis in transportation changes and notes what proactive communities can do. She says, "Now all this pavement is just lying there empty. At the same time, people on skinny sidewalks and packed greenways are sometimes forced to ignore the prudent two-meter distancing rule. In response, cities are starting to use closed vehicle and parking lanes, seeking spaces big enough for people to safely maintain physical distance. Municipalities are getting creative, including ours here on the North Shore," end of quote. "Since the province of B C's COVID nineteen pandemic response, the township of Langley too has noticeably decreased motor vehicle traffic and a significant increase in pedestrian and cycling activity. Hub Langley estimates an increase in cycling traffic of six hundred and fifty percent in some places. Along certain streets and pathways, pedestrians and cyclists congestion is substantial and some bottlenecks exist while pedestrians and cyclists try to maintain physical distance at two meters. However, to physically distance to ourselves to two meters outdoors while moving is actually not enough. Preliminary research by Block and Itall shows that moving persons require greater birth than persons who are standing still due to the slipstream effect of movement aerodynamics. For example, the aerodynamically physical distancing recommendation for a pedestrian walking at four kilometers an hour is five meters and for a runner at fourteen point four kilometers an hour is ten meters. Our public spaces are filling up with walkers and cyclists trying to distance from each other while our roads, as a recent Globe and Mail article tells us, have been emptying of motor vehicle traffic. In Portland, the Transportation Commissioner, Claude Yudle, states that "The Portland Bureau of Transportation is, quote, 'carefully considering how transportation behavior has changed and how it needs to change, not just as we recover from this crisis, but to support a sustainable future,'" end of quote. Portland's Slow Streets, Safe Streets initiatives includes pop-up walking spaces and biking lanes. Yudle states that, quote, "Portlanders need to move around our city safely and improve how we share a right-of-way. We have been responsive to community advocates and business concerns while balancing the vital need to prioritize public health and vulnerable persons," end of quote. Municipalities worldwide are choosing reallocation of roadways for safe distancing while walking and cycling. Projects of all kinds exist around the world. Portland, Berlin, Mexico City, Bogota, Atlanta, New York, Seattle, and Canada, wrapped in Toronto, Winnipeg, Calgary. In the province of B C, two cities are responding. Aided by the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure's new guidelines for reallocation of road space during the COVID nineteen pandemic. In fact, the cities of Vancouver, North Vancouver and Richmond have relocated lanes and reallocations are currently being considered in new Westminster. Here in the township of Langley, residents are experiencing the same effects of higher pedestrian and cyclist volume and low traffic volume. Therefore, the township too should become creative and reallocate road space to keep its residents safe. As such, Hub Langley requests temporary dawn to dusk reallocation of following lanes to only pedestrian and cycling traffic. One, the right-hand westbound lane of eighty-eighth Avenue from two sixteen Street to two oh two Street. Two, the right-hand southbound lane of two sixteen Street from North Langley Greenway to eighty-eighth Avenue. And three, the right-hand lane of Walnut Grove Drive between two twelve Street and eighty-eighth Avenue. Hub Langley notes that all these reallocations would support good connectivity to existing trails and pathways in North Langley. None of these reallocations would interfere with two-way traffic. None of these reallocations would require removal of any permanent parking. With respect to the two sixteen Street reallocation request, this reallocation will consist of the Topham Elementary School Travel Plan Steering Committee meeting on April twenty-fourth. Therefore, the two sixteen Street reallocation request would allow for cycling lanes to be piloted in support of the Topham Elementary School Travel Plan Initiative. All of these reallocations can be trialed on a one-time or ongoing basis. For example, one week, weekends only, for mornings only, on one day only, such as May Day and Luba Parade, or on one day of the month. All these reallocations could also be trialed in certain shorter segments of road only. There are undoubtedly other places in the township which would also be great places to reallocate road space. We support all such reallocations of road space in the township. Temporary, temporary road reallocations in the township will relieve pressures on trails, paths and multi-use paths around the community to keep residents safe and to contribute to the township of Langley's COVID nineteen crisis recovery response. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you for the presentation. I don't see any questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll have our final delegation is Mr. Gill, Tony Gill. Come in. Okay, welcome here. And you have five minutes to present. Just find us your name.
Okay, well, thank you, Your Worship, and councillor, for allowing me the opportunity to come forward and, and present our situation to you. I'm Tony Gill and Jurnell Gill is my mom. She owns the property at seven four four nine two hundred Street. I've sent council and everyone a copy of my letter. I won't read through all of it. But one of the things that I did want to talk to was the fact that, you know, our family has been here since the thirties. I was born and raised in Langley. And we continue to be interactive with the community here and enjoy Langley a tremendous amount. We understand that council and, and previous councils have approved and the will of the area for redevelopment and that's fine. And I think transformation and creating vibrant communities is an important aspect of growth and change. And we're accepted to that. In this particular case, what we're trying to understand is how can we play a part of it and how come we were left out of it? So there's lots of unanswered questions. Even staff are unable to actually respond to those questions in a fulsome manner. And they're not even able to obtain some of the information. So it is very concerning as one of the largest, you know, the largest piece of land there. And we're the ones that have been there the longest as well. So I have put in the letter four kind of key things that I felt were important for us to just to, to be able to give us time to understand what has happened and what has occurred. We received this information in a very short period of time. So I haven't had ample time to actually put together a proper, fulsome kind of response, but I did the best I could in the amount of time that was actually put forward to us. It was almost like this was just being gonna force through and we weren't gonna have any say in it. So I had to really move quickly. So I apologize for, you know, the shortness of my letter. So the first thing we're asking for is council to defer approval until, that we can actually get a fulsome perspective of what's happening in that area with regards to this detention pond and how it serves not only the other lands, but also ours. The second thing we're asking for is detailed engineering works on that pond. And how were the calculations actually determined and how were they calculated with respect to our land? You would expect that the city would have this information or at least the developers would be prepared to share it. It puts certain strengths, limitations on your land. And that's one of the largest pieces. We were never consulted. It was very clear that the developers had all met, they had all kind of discussed. It was very clear that, uh, the developers had all met. They had all kind of discussed it. They had had meetings with the city. The city met with their engineers and went through a process, uh, to determine the size of the pond. But excluded us, as they only needed 50% of the interest to, to move forward. There's a cost, uh, to, to, to the pond, and, and I understand that, and I understand there are DCC charges that take care of some of this, but, I've been told there's gonna be charges put onto our land, charges of almost $700,000. Just imagine someone putting $700,000 onto your land that you've owned since well over 40 years. You've had no say on it. You've been told that it's gonna have compounding interest. And, uh, you don't even know how that $700,000 was derived. Even the city doesn't understand how that number actually was derived. They're just basing it on some comparables or just some statistical numbers, but not actual facts. I think that's very discerning, um, and not very transparent, uh, especially to the public. And that's just my interest, but it's to all of those. So even though they check the boxes and they meet the 50%, council isn't here to just check the boxes and make sure that 50% is met. It's to take a, a step back. People like myself have raised something. Is the bylaw really acting in the best interest of the public or in the best interest of that community? Maybe there's flaws in that bylaws. That's why we have laws and courts and all sorts of things, um, to question them, to see if there's changes to it. We've adapted, we changed, um, over the years, so bylaws need to do the same. I think with respect to the interest charges and all of those things, whether I'm correct on that or not, but I've been told by the city that that's the case. If the city's come back and answered most of my questions, that'd be great, but I'd like to have time to digest them. I'd like to have time to have input, um, and, uh, ensure that our interests, um, are, are looked after. And our interests, even though they may be ours personally, I think that serves a broader interest to the public as well, because this is setting some type of precedence that I don't think, just because of a reputation of a developer and a reputation of an engineering company, that things should process through. They should definitely go through a due diligence process, and we should have been part of that due diligence. To get less than seven days, I think it was probably like five days if you include the weekend, to sign a letter, uh, and say you don't have a choice and it doesn't matter, we're gonna do it anyways, isn't very prudent upon the city to allow that to occur. I did have conversations with the city. I've outlined those conversations, um, by dates. I, I've included some of the commentaries, um, for your, for you to, um, look at and understand, and I'm sure that within the short period of time that I had, you also had a very short period of time to digest all of this and to collect the information. So therefore, I'm requesting that, uh, this be deferred, um, so that we can better, uh, understand it and, um, be a better participant, uh, and of what's going on, um, with this, with this pond and how it serves us. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. Um, there's several questions. Uh, to point out, we're, we're not a city, we're a township, we're a township.
Sorry, sorry.
A little sensitive point with most members of council.
Yes, yes, yes.
Including myself. Question, how, you say you have the largest piece. How large is, how many acres is your piece?
Uh, about six acres.
About six acres, okay. And valued around three million an acre now, so about 18 million. Roughly. Okay, thank you. Uh, I've got some questions here. Counselor Richter.
Uh, yes, thank you very much for your delegation. Now, um, you're saying that you'd like a deferral. How long a deferral would you like? Like, would a deferral to the next meeting be sufficient?
Well, if I looked at the pace that I was trying to get this information, um, with, unfortunately with the COVID issues and people not being available and stuff, I, I would have, I would suspect that it's gonna take me eight to 12 weeks, uh, to be able to get. First of all, they have to collect the data and share the data. Um, that might take a little bit of time. Once I get the data and I go to the table through it and justify whether it makes sense. Some of my other questions, maybe it's, it's much easier for them to answer sooner, but with the engineering aspects of it, um, that might take a little bit of time.
Okay, now, you've listed in your letter, uh, that's attached to your delegation request, team four, six, eight, items of information that you need. Uh, is there some information that's more important than others? Uh, and, and also, what information have you been given? Or have you been given any information other than this is happening?
Okay, very good questions. Uh, I think if I had to prioritize, I mean, the, the first thing is understanding how the charges are gonna be applied. Is there truly compounding interest, and then what are those interests? So what is the, uh, what is the impact of the cost to us over the, over, over this land? Because maybe we don't want to do anything right now, maybe we want, we want to take our time and do it over a period of, of whatever. So that's very important. The second thing is, uh, the, the, the data that goes into calculating the engineering requirements for the pond, uh, what were the calculations used for our parcel? We don't know what that is. So that's very important because it sets limitations, um, on our land. Uh, it also sets, uh, certain volume projections and stuff that again, uh, impacts, uh, what we can do with it. Um, so that's, that's an important piece for us to understand and how we connect back to, to the main line. So I would say those are a pretty high priority, and then the land, I mean, as far as that costing goes, transparency in how the cost was determined is, I think, important. I think it's important for council, uh, for the township to, to really, truly understand, how those numbers were derived. I mean, I think that's very important to understand.
Okay.
A lot of money if we, if we just, uh, want to not do something immediately.
Yeah, so you're just basically saying that you feel you've been left out of the process. There needs to be more diligence in review of the information, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so you haven't been able to get any of this information from township or from the developer?
That's right, and the township, um, in fairness, tried and, um, went to, uh, the developer to ask for the information, but they're reluctant to share it. Reluctant to share the engineering data, as well as reluctant to share how they derive their costs.
Okay, and did they give you any reason why there's a reluctance?
There, they basically, the rationale was that they're reputable developers, they used engineers that we've known, they've done work in the area before, uh, with that comparables, um, it seems in line.
Okay, and my, my last question that I'd like to ask, you say, uh, it will affect, um, or it could affect your, the future use of your parcel. So, um, are you anticipating to want to do a different kind of use on your parcel than what the zoning per, or what the neighborhood plan permits?
To be honest with you, I haven't put thought into that. Uh, it, this was not a priority of ours. Um, obviously, when changes in transformation happens like this in, in, in a community, um, sometimes you're pushed and forced to do certain things, and, uh, we might be now being in that position where we may have to start looking at it. And, uh, and, and fairness, uh, you know, I, I, I would start to look at it immediately if that's what I have to do.
So your family currently still lives on the property and you had no plans to move from it?
Uh, the, the land is, is a vacant land.
Oh, okay.
My mom, uh, had purchased it a long time ago with my dad, and the intent was initially to build a home there. And then dad passed away, and we decided, uh, that time mom just decided to hold and stay where she was. And so we just never went further with that.
Okay. Thank you very much for raising these issues. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Woodward.
I don't know if you can hear me at all. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the first time I've spoken today, so I want to thank you for the delegation as well, and thanks for some of the communication over the weekend. Um, I'll definitely have a few questions from, for staff when the item hits the agenda, but for yourself, I, well, I, I know that the, uh, the process for this can be definitely frustrating in terms of the legislative requirements. They only have to meet a certain threshold, which may or may not require your consent or involvement. So certainly recognize that it's not a perfect process. But I wanted to confirm that even if we were to go through this process and do some of that due diligence at, at a council level or at, at your, at your level, even if the number moved, you know, a million or so, it's not gonna move the per-acre fee all that much for a property of your size or value? So, you know, what is the, you know, while it might be frustrating, what is the end goal? Because we're not necessarily gonna lower the per-acre charge all that much, even if the number was reduced by a million or so, or whatever number might be that's in there. Interest is taken out, like, the number on your per-acre fee for your property isn't gonna move that much, even with a more extensive property, a more expensive process. Uh, so I'm wondering if you could, could give us some insight into what you're trying to achieve in general, because I don't see the number moving that much either way.
And, and you may be correct. Maybe, maybe, maybe the number, uh, doesn't move, um, either way that much. And that's fine, I guess, but, uh, we still need to understand the number. We still need to be transparent about that number. Uh, there is the opportunity, from my understanding, that, uh, the developer can increase that number through change orders. We don't know how that change order process is actually going to take, take place. We have no control over it. We have no insight into it. We have no, there's just absolutely no transparency to that. So even though the number may not shift much, um, there's still the challenge of the charge. Uh, there's the challenge of compounding interest. Uh, and then there's the challenge of the engineering aspects of it. Um, and how does that, uh, uh, take care of our interests?
Yeah, so yeah, I appreciate that as well. So again, like I said, there'll be a discussion when it, when it comes up on the agenda. I'll have a number of questions, and then hopefully you'll watch that. The, uh, last question I had is, a lot of people would find another developer servicing their property in terms of, uh, drainage and other, another, another required element such as school sites and so on, which has been solved by this developer to allow for your property to be developed, which I would perceive could significantly improve its sale value because it's now immediately developable, and that service is being provided by another developer. Is that not a benefit to you? Wouldn't you want that to happen so your property can be developed and increase in value?
Only if the data is correct and the data allows for the proper development of the land. It could be a hindrance. If, if you don't understand the data and you don't have the engineering numbers in front of you, how can you be confident that it is gonna allow what you need to have happen on your land happen? You could have an undersized bike, or you could have a bike that doesn't, you know, do certain things for you, and now you're gonna have to spend a whole lot more money to come back and do it, uh, in a, in a, in a proper manner that accommodates our needs.
The irony being that a lot of developers are complaining to me, and I'm assuming some others, that we're actually oversizing this infrastructure now due to concerns of climate change mitigation. Um, so, you know, it actually might be the reverse. It might actually be slightly over-engineered. But I'll, I'll leave it there, and again, appreciate your, your desire to get more information. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gill, for coming today. I've actually had the opportunity to speak with you, and because I, because I spoke with you, I had, I wanted to do some research on my own. Uh, I, I did have a chance to speak with the other side and ask some of the detailed questions that you indeed have asked yourself. Uh, they have provided, uh, as best they possibly could, all the answers that you've asked even today, which I'm kind of surprised to see you today. But, uh, because I thought the answers were given, they were given by staff, they were given by the proponents, and, uh, an opportunity was also provided for you, as, uh, Counselor Woodward has indicated as well, that when these works are done, your property will be worth more money. Six acres of highly developable land in Willoughby, believe it or not, uh, I'm not sure if your parents or your family know that, has gone up substantially in 40 years. Uh, so I'm somewhat disappointed, um, you know, in some of your comments today. I think that, you know, we welcome, we, we welcome applicants to come in, we welcome delegations to come in. But, you know, we, we do have a professional staff, we have standards, and we do have policies, and, um, their views of what's going on and your views indeed are different, and that's all I wanted to point out. Thank you for coming today.
Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just to clarify if you're, uh, if you have a concern with, um, the process that is followed and wonder if, and not happy with the process, or, or do you think that the, uh, that staff and has not followed the process? I don't know if you understand the difference.
I think, uh, staff, which is, uh, Mr. Anderson that I spoke to, um, he, he was very nice. He just didn't, there was not enough time for him to get me or collect the information, and the developer was unwilling to provide that information. And I think, uh, they were put in a little bit of a difficult position. So, no, I have nothing against the township of Langley and its staff, and I, I just want to be able to be able to see some of the information. I, I don't understand, even if I was to benefit from it and everything else, do I still not have the right to see? Is this still not a public process that I can't see some of the transparent, of, of, of that information? I would think that that's still something that they could put forward. So, Mr. Anderson did ask, did try to get the information, but they refused to provide it, and, uh, they were not able to give me that information.
Okay, so we know that, you know, maybe about 60% or so have supported it. Do you know if those people had that information, or do you know that they didn't have the information but supported it anyways?
What I did understand from Mr. Anderson is that the other developers, um, did have an opportunity with their engineers to sit down with the engineering department of the township, like, and, and with the, um, the developers who's have actually developed the pond, with their engineers, because they use the same engineer, uh, to figure out the sizing and everything else, um, correctly. So they all had an opportunity to have those discussions with the city, uh, with the township, as well as with, uh, the developer. I, I didn't have that opportunity. I wasn't provided that opportunity.
Right, okay. Thanks very much.
Counselor Richter.
Yes, um, I just want to follow up on Counselor, uh, Ferguson's comments. He seemed to be saying that you were given information, but were you? Because it seems to me, from what you've written and what you've said, you weren't given any information.
We weren't given, uh, we were not given the data, uh, or the engineering calculations, or any information on the breakdown of the cost. Mr. Anderson can, can concur with that, because, uh, he clearly wrote me back and said, uh, talk to developers, this is all you're gonna get. And it was very basic information.
So if, um, if that information, i-if somebody is saying that they shared that information with you, then that's not correct. You never got that information.
No, I got general information, but not the actual engineering calculations or the breakdown of the costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I don't see any other questions. I've got one, one question. Uh, you say your mother owns this property. Uh, what authority do you have to speak on her behalf? And you're not the property owner, so I'm, I'm a little bit unclear. You didn't, uh, you didn't establish her.
I have the power of attorney, and I have the trust.
Okay, good, thanks. I just, that was a, a piece that wasn't there. Thank you. Okay, now, we have no further questions. Thank you for your delegation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Wait for the clerk to...
Okay, so move on to, to council, um, number one. Development Permanent Application Number 120924. I'm sorry, I have a, uh, a, a, a statement.
Point of order, Jack. We can't hear you. You're all mumbled.
Oh. Okay, my mic is, can you hear me now? Okay, yeah, it's good now? Okay.
Yeah, yes, it's good now.
Thank you. Uh, my mic tucks in behind my collar sometimes. Development Permanent Application Number 120924, Focus Architecture, uh, and if I could have a motion from council.
Hello?
Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis moves it, secondor. Uh, Counselor Kunt, seconds. Uh, is there any, uh, questions or discussion? Counselor Woodward. I think you're muted.
Get off mute there, yeah. I just wanted to clarify the, uh, the percentage of tandem parking in this one, whether it complies with the revised policy.
Uh, Mr. Seffy, are you, there you are. Mr. Seffy, if you can, uh, respond to that question.
Yes, your worship, it does.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think it, uh, it definitely does by probably a fraction of a percent or something, but, uh, won't blabber it. Um, so yeah, I think, uh, I would like to, to have this sent back to reduce the, the quantity intended to a much lower number that the developer can work with staff.
Is that a motion? Is it, is it all second?
I mean, I'll, I'll adopt, Mr. Mayor, if you wish to take other speakers, but that's a motion.
No, there are no further speakers, so you're moving, uh, to...
Prefer back to staff to reduce the quantity of tandem parking to a more reasonable number is working with staff.
I will second that.
Second, my Counselor Richter, so discussion, Counselor Long.
Well, you were, you know, allow this motion. We've already had a, uh, the, what the...
You're breaking up, Counselor Long.
Can you?
Yeah, that's better. This is breaking up a bit. Still breaking up. We're not cat, Mr. Counselor Long, we can't hear you.
Just doing one, two, three.
There you go. That's better.
All right. Well, I don't know if you should allow this motion, your worship, because it does comply.
Yes, so that's, or council will make that decision, yeah. I agree with you.
But allowing, but why would, how could the proponent go back and change their numbers when they are actually...
And, I, I can't hear. I can't hear.
Yeah, I think, uh, with Counselor Long said, I'll just, uh, rephrase this. How can this go back to staff when it complies with the... How can this go back to staff when it complies with the zoning and at the development permit stage? So I hear, Counsel Long, is that what you said? Because you were broken up there a bit.
And we spent
Oh, you're still, you're coming and going. It's really frustrating, yeah. Yeah, I don't know what what Maybe it's your wifi.
All right.
Yeah, still a little bit broken up. I think you've made your point. I think we've got it, so if you're okay with that.
Yeah, but I mean, if we're going to change, then we need to change the bylaw again.
Yes, I, yeah. It's not a one of, okay, thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'm very concerned in this particular area with the density that's going in there and with excessive or tandem parking at its maximum. We are going to have a serious issue with on-street parking as we have had in other areas of the township. So this is why I'm supporting Counselor Woodward's referral back to relook at the tandem parking numbers and see if they can't be brought down a bit.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Okay, hopefully now you can hear me and my concerns would be similar to Counsel Long, only that I would indicate, this is the first time we've had a major amendment come on on the Zoom. We've had a meeting, but not a lot of it made, I called it a major amendment. And we do have a bylaw, we do have, we had great discussion, went back and forth regarding tandem parking. And this is what we decided upon. I think that's what happens when we had a a discussion with Dr. Holden from SFU as to, you know, what is, are we as a council going to endorse and go forward with? And what are we going to support? We can't have bylaws and then support, go against our own bylaws. That causes a frustration between our citizens, residents, developers and those that do business in our community. So I I just can't see a reason to change the report and change the the parking. Tandem parking, as we decided, serves a role in the community. It serves a role. And that's why we came up with the percentage that we had. It's not a hundred percent, we came up with percentage. So I can't support this amendment because I think it's out of order. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Davis?
Could I just ask a question through to staff? Are we legally, like you had commented, I I heard Counsel Long and you had concurred with him, but are we? Maybe if we could get it from Raymond, that are Mr. Steffi, are we, are we allowed to do this? I guess counsel is, but we're doing it one, one project at a time. Are we allowed to do that?
Well, the short answer is yes. Just just maybe a little bit, this is a development permit, so we can rule on form, site and character. However, this is just a referral back for staff to talk to him, but I think ultimately it is only form, site and character. Maybe this kind of squeezes into into the character of the development, so that's why I'm kind of giving a little bit of leeway.
It wouldn't be illegal yet.
Yeah, Mr. Seffy, can you help clarify?
Thank you, your worship. I think you you hit the nail on the head in terms of the actual application being a development permit. And as such, somewhat limited to form, site and character, this could be amended by council based on the citing. Factors of of the development permit issue. Having said that, I can confirm that the zoning bylaw does, as per council's direction, as of discussions of a couple of years ago, was amended to allow for up to forty percent of the units within within a development to have tandem parking. So if this was to be amended, it would be inconsistent with the provisions of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Mute myself, yeah. So I'll address some of those comments. I think, yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you reduce the density. I'm not suggesting that they they make a better development. So Counsel Ferguson asked what the reason would be to do this. And that's pretty simply the reason, to get better development and everything. So the, that's the, that's the idea. And then in regards to Counsel Long's comments, in regards to the policy itself, I certainly take those to heart, but as we learned during the fill deposit processing, when multiple applications were approved by this council despite the policy, we see that policies are made to be broken on occasion, and I feel that this should be one of those occasions. Thanks.
Counsel Ferguson?
Do you have my hand up? Oh, I can respond regardless. I mean, I don't think, I agree with the planner or the general manager safety. I mean, the reality is, I think we should stick with our bylaws and not change them in stream.
Thank you. Okay, I I won't be supporting referral. I I do agree that they've complied. We've had extensive discussions on on the tandem parking and it does serve a purpose, as I heard earlier. So I'm going to, I, okay, I thought I had, okay, I've got Counsel Richter. Did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 use of tandem parking, doesn't that affect form, sighting and character?
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not ruling this out of order. I'm just saying, that's my opinion is that I don't agree with the referral, but I have allowed this to proceed, so.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we could, a little bit of elasticity and form, sighting and character. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the referral. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, I'm in favor, yeah, obviously.
Yeah, okay. So we've got counsel, I'm going to read them out. Counsel Kunt, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Ferguson. Counsel Long, you're against?
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor Froze against. Counsel Davis, I didn't see, are you against or in favor?
In favor.
Favor, okay. Looks like a five, four. So the referral is defeated, so we're back to the main motion. So no further discussion. I'm going to call the question on the main motion, on the development permit. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter, who else opposed? Counsel, okay, I got two opposed. Thank you. And Counsel Anderson, I'm sorry, I missed you. Were you in favor or opposed to the
Okay, I was opposed.
You were opposed, okay. Just to make sure I got your name on there. Thank you. So two opposed on the main motion that it carries.
Mayor Froze?
Yes.
Can I fix this audio thing? Am I not coming through again?
Now you're coming through. Yeah, now you're coming through clear. Yeah.
So one problem was, all right.
Just something that's happening there. Okay, great. So E one is done. We'll move on to E two. And this is irrigation systems and shallow well areas. This is bit of a change in provincial legislation from the water management to the Water Act to the Water Sustainability Act. And so if I could have a motion from counsel on E two. Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Davis. Any discussion on E two?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Counsel Richter?
Getting my cell phone muted here. Yeah, I, this was in general a a good approach. But I don't think a policy is strong enough. And I believe that if we are allowed under the province's water sustainability plan or Water Act or whatever it is, we should be requiring properties over half an acre in the township that are irrigated to obtain an annual permit from the province or license from the province to do this, as well as paying an annual usage fee. And I would like to move an amendment to this that our plan include the banning of water or lawn irrigation on SR and rural properties over half an acre in size during the summer months.
I just want to clarify from staff, Mr. Backen, on what jurisdiction do we have as a municipality to pose that when it's provincially mandated? Just help clarify what this report does in relation to what Counsel Richter's motion is.
Thank you, your worship. In the context of this report, we're actually doing a couple of things. We're actually seeking the re, the permission of the province to effectively change the label and as well to strengthen some of our, our, I guess, tools in terms of dealing with some of the issues that they previously granted. Some of the improvements or refinements is being suggested, again, would be on to our jurisdiction unless the province were to actually agree to them. And we found out historically that we have to be a bit cautious and be a bit balanced because if we add too much on, it may diminish the chance of having anything approved by the province, as we've seen in some previous examples. Now, Mr. Seffy may have some ability to elaborate then on some of the specifics that were raised.
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, your worship. As Mr. Backen referenced, your worship, this is a a good move. This is the first step. As the report references, the province has full jurisdiction over water extraction and and irrigation uses in the in the province. So by having this this plan that was actually presented to them more than more than a decade ago in two thousand and nine, and based on a couple of, I guess, implications, the province did not approve the plan as it was submitted to them back in two thousand and nine. The first one was what they, I guess, referenced as implications on resources. The provincial resources did not allow that to happen. And the second one was the fact that the province was moving from a sort of a regulatory regime to a more of a compliance regime with the Sustainability Act as opposed to the the previous regulations. So having worked with the community for a long period of time prior to the water management plan being prepared in two thousand and nine, the the issues have not changed. The issues remain the same. And what we would like to do is have this plan approved by the province. And by doing so, that the province, that opens a door for the township to actually request additional regulatory powers, which we currently don't have. So this would be, I guess, a segue, if you will, in in requesting additional regulatory powers in terms of requiring certification from from professionals before irrigation is allowed. And secondly, to restrict irrigation in certain certain areas based on certain conditions, which we currently don't have. So that is the intent.
Okay, and and I can understand that intent and and a move forward. But unfortunately, my concern is I think we are in desperate water streets in the Salmon River uplands area this summer. And I think that that is being driven by two things. Number one, the collapse of the embankment on the Salmon River, which has, and and this was in, I'm referring now to material that was in our items distributed to council list on April thirtieth. Report number five talks about two Artesian or Arterial Springs that were opened up as a result of the bank collapse. And now over a hundred and fifty liters per minute are emptying out of the groundwater through that embankment collapse down into the Salmon River. That is now depriving water from residents in the Hoppington aquifer. And we've received a number of letters from different residents concerning this. And if you go to item six, again, on items distributed on April thirtieth, there is a series of emails there from an individual who lives on the other side of the Salmon River from where I live. And this person indicates that, oh, I'm just going to read it here. I'm reading from page twenty-one. Most houses here have roughly one hundred foot deep wells drawing on the Hoppington aquifer. Time and again, we are seeing new homes being built in the area. So these are one acre properties. They're tearing down the bungalows on the properties. They are rebuilding very, very large houses and installing lawn sprinkler systems and running them more frequently. A new house on their street was, is still utilizing a pre-existing one foot well. They installed a lawn sprinkler system and ran their sprinkler system twice a day, every day for the entire summer. And as a result, the neighbors are not able to get enough water pressure even to water their own little gardens. So there's an equity issue here and there is a, I I believe, a developing crisis situation here in water levels in the Hoppington that we absolutely must address. So my question back to you, Mr. Ramon, Seffy, would be, can we put some something into this request that we're sending to the provincial government, asking them to take into consideration emergency type situations such as we're in now with that collapsed bank on the Salmon River and the emptying of literal emptying of groundwater reservoirs into the Salmon River. And that's going to make a lot of people's wells run dry. My property alone, I've got a pond which kind of acts as a barometer of the water table around here. My pond right now in May is sitting at August levels. What's it going to be like in August?
Okay, so I'll ask, I'm interested to answer that, but just want to be clear, we're looking at two different things. That's a specific issue that I know staff are looking into. And then we're looking at, this is a water sustainability plan. Mr. Seffy, can you help answer some of those questions?
Thank you again, your worship, and and once again, you you hit the nail on the head. Exactly, two separate issues. One is, I guess, the, I I realize, I recognize the fact that they're related. But the fact is that we're requesting council to consider staff working with the province in order for us to have more regulatory powers to control irrigation and to control drilling of wells. That is the essence of of the request of of council and the substance of of the report. Beyond that, yes, we recognize that there are issues and staff is actually working on resolving those those issues related to the the lowering of the water level within the aquifer and and what the residents are experiencing. And and the correlation that may or may not exist between what's happening in the actual field with respect to the lowering of the well and a a couple of other, I guess, events, one being the failure of an embankment adjacent to Salmon River on private property and the other one is control over Artesian wells. We have requested a geotechnical engineer with expertise in geoscience to actually work on an expedited expedited basis and and try and and answer some of the questions with some investigation and and research. And we're expecting the the findings to come out in the next few weeks. But early indications are that there is no correlation, there's no relationship between the lowering of the water level in the aquifer, in the Hoppington aquifer and the slope failure in terms of the reasons behind what people are, our residents are experiencing have been attributed to two things. One is an approximately thirty percent increase in domestic water usage based on the fact that more people are at home. This has been observed and is not just based on on hearsay. It's actually observed in the field in terms of the thirty percent increase of of the usage. And the other one is actually a decrease in the rainfall that we've experienced as a region in April and and in May of, again, about forty percent prior to the, or in comparison with the average rainfall in those months. So putting these two together, scientists believe that the reason for the lowering of the water well is not related to the collapse or the failure of the bank, but rather the the combination of more use of the the water as well as the lower rate of discharge of the aquifer.
Okay.
Reduced rainfall.
And we can try and separate it up into different packages. I understand why why that's being done. But what I'm saying is it's all interconnected. It's all water. And when the water disappears from the Hoppington aquifer area this summer, we're going to have a lot of of distressed residents. And I think we need to be a little more proactive about how it is we're going to protect that water. And if it's possible by doing this first step, we can come back with making sure that irrigation systems that are in place now can be turned off during, or mandated to be turned off during the summer months, then that's a good thing. Now, if, and my last question will be, can we do that? If we do this as a first step and we get more regulatory power, can we turn those private irrigation systems that are totally unnecessary on, in a shallow well area off in the summer months in the future?
So, Mr. Seffy, if you can help answer that. And thank you, Counsel Richter. I think, you know, once we're we're through this, handling this as separate motions would be, I think, more beneficial. Get this through and then subsequent motions, especially after we get more information from staff. But Mr. Seffy, on regulating irrigation in summer on areas that that aren't served by the township's water system, can we do that on well system or is that totally provincial?
Thank you, your worship. It is part of the request at this point. But again, to clarify, it's a two-step process. The first step is to, for the province to agree to approve the plan. The plan includes recommendations for additional regulatory power, but just by approving the plan, it doesn't mean that we will have the power. The plan, subject to council's endorsement and subject to the province approving it, will then have additional requirements in terms of implementation. will then have additional requirements in terms of implementation. The implementation will include, because the plan already includes the recommendations, additional regulatory powers. For us to be able to exactly do what Council Victor's suggesting, but that will require another level of approval by the province as part of the second step, which is, okay, here's our, our suggested bylaws. And it's in compliance with what, what we said in our plan. So please now approve the, the bylaw that we said you would do in the plan.
Okay. I'll accept to go with this two-step process. But I would really hope that our staff will take very careful notes about water levels in the Hoppington this summer. Cause it's not gonna be pretty. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And, uh, I have asked staff about that and they are, as Mrs. Seifi had, had explained, uh, they are taking steps to get a better understanding of what's happening. Uh, it's, it's easy for people to speculate and there's usually it's several factors, not just one. But I do appreciate that. Thanks. Council Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Seifi, for sort of expressing the foundational aspects and the longer-term objective of trying to carve out some local government authority. Because I know otherwise groundwater resides with the jurisdiction of the province. So I totally get that. Um, just more pointedly towards moving forward with this. I'm wondering whether or not, given the circumstance that we have with a summer that's predicted to be quite dry scientifically, also a lowering of, of the levels that's been described either anecdotally or because, you know, the township has been measuring it themselves. I'm wondering if it might be prudent to seek, I know we don't like to do this, but a brief moratorium just because of the timeline with respect to this legislation. I'm thinking that there are other emergency or pressing issues that might take precedence. And I wouldn't want to see this, uh, delayed. So it would be along the lines of having a moratorium on irrigation systems over vulnerable aquifers until such time as our new water sustainability regulations could be in place.
Mr. Seifi or Mr. Bakken, do we have the authority to do a moratorium?
Uh, thank you, your worship. We, we have a limited ability to actually defer certain sorts of applications if there's a bylaw pending. The challenge with the bylaws being suggested is it's beyond our jurisdiction at the onset. I think a, as, a more appropriate approach would simply be to communicate with the province then as to the emergent need of dealing with, uh, permitting local governments to somehow regulate water levels. To date, they've, um, they have, um, not endorsed such a process or such processes. Instead, they've recommended that parties reply directly to them and that, that, uh, or applied to them and that has taken some time. But if we are trying to craft a, uh, a way to justify a moratorium, we're going to have to enter into a bylaw process that, that changes, uh, existing, um, I guess, use within our jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. Just to follow up on that. And I understand that that has been our strategy in the past and it's an extraordinary complication. But I am concerned that if there is too long a delay, this in fact, by default creates a surge of interest in those who find out that we are trying to change our water regulations and want to get ahead of that by, uh, you know, making sure that their systems, their irrigation systems, which by the way, I don't support on, on lands that don't have any viable agriculture, especially if you're over an aquifer. So that's, you know, my personal comment on how little I, I think of advancing policies that in any way actually support people overwatering and taking away from other existing users. Having said that, um, you know, I think, I guess I could be agreeable to the urgency of the language. And I certainly would underline the fact that this is something that's currently likely happening in our jurisdiction. And that we want to be able to, uh, encourage them to amend this as soon as possible. Because it seems to me this is long overdue and I don't like to be impolite with the province. But it seems like we should have had this ability some time ago, especially in light of climate change. We really need to take the bull by the horns and make sure that we are doing what is necessary to protect our residents.
Can you hear? Can anybody hear me? Jack?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, there's Steve. Jack, I can't hear you.
Yeah, unfortunately, the mayor is not hearable at the moment. We'll look into that. But Council Davis, you could go ahead, please.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, very important subject. I, I'm concerned, Council Richter. Um, to irrigation systems in shallow well areas. I, I, I don't know this, but is there any little nurseries or any little, um, people that are, that have, uh, agriculture, things like that, that are on, uh, the aquifer that do rely on it? That, you know, even, um, that we could be by doing this, uh, unconsequentially, uh, I'm gonna mop. Uh, I, that's what I'm concerned. Also, uh, there's a, this, this is, um, this is to send irrigation systems in shallow well areas, but they, they do have a plan here. Um, the, I guess, not the GB, I, I don't know who said, oh, it's a, um, a homeowner's guide to outdoor water use. And it says in here, breakdown of indoor water use, fourteen percent leakage. I, I, I just don't know where that comes from. You'd think somebody would see of the amount of water they use in their household, fourteen percent leakage. Um, unbelievable. That, that's maybe gotten under. I'm just concerned that by doing this, are we going to, um, jeopardize some, you know, somebody that we're overlooking uh, on the, on the Hoppington aquifer, another aquifer that has been growing, uh, uh, nursery for a long time on a very small scale, but does need the egg, does need the irrigation. Cause I guess if we, if it, if we would limit, uh, wouldn't limit it, we'd have a problem. Uh, we'd hear from them. Anyhow, can you hear me now, Jack? Can you talk? Oh, there you go. I guess, I, I, that's my concern. I mean, up, even up where, uh, you know, and in your area, there are little places that add agriculture to, to, so I, I, um, yeah, anyhow, okay, I just comment. I'm over.
Thank you. They're giving me another headset. My headset failed, so I'm not on. So we'll wait for that.
I.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good.
It's scratchy.
Yeah. Council Ferguson?
Well, that's what happens when you buy stuff from the dollar store.
That's right.
Well, you're saving the community money though. But, uh, I did want to say, I, I have, agree with, uh, David, Council David, Davis. Uh, the fact is, you know, there still is, it is a provincial issue. And, uh, you know, it's, everything ends up going to the province because we're a child of the province. Um, they, we also have to, uh, be aware and cognizant of, of people that are, are farming and farming animals and, and number of things in that area. Uh, I'm sure it's education's important that we can do, but I think it's very, very important not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, that we are cognizant and aware that this community has a large farm gate sales from, uh, agricultural industry. And I know it varies from aqua, uh, aquifer to aquifer, but we should always be mindful of that. Uh, education's important. So it still is a provincial issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Yeah, I'm, uh, just to go back to Councilor Davis's comments. In the area that I'm in, there is a little nursery and that little nursery has not enough water to be a nursery because somebody's watering their lawns instead of letting that nursery use the water to, to water the nursery. So this is the issue. I'm not opposed to irrigation systems for farming operations. I am very supportive of water being available for farming operations. Also for rural residents or suburban rural residents that, that live on, uh, on shallow wells. The, the point is you don't need a green lawn watered at the expense of all of your neighbors. That's the issue. It's the green irrigated lawns from my perspective, but thanks for raising your concerns. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I'll see any further questions. Someone called a question on E two. Uh, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? If you're not opposed, it carries unanimously. We went to E three. This is the June and July twenty twenty council calendar amendments. You have a motion, please? Uh, sorry, I'm, uh, getting my. Council Davis moves it. Council Kuntz, is that your hand up? Backens, uh, discussion, Council Richter?
Yeah, I just had a query with regards to the fact we're not gonna have another meeting now for a month.
Oh, we have a meeting, next meeting in May?
No, there's no other meeting in May. We're not meeting now till June.
Sorry. Get my headset on again. We'll switch over here. Give me a second.
Also, who's got the wind chimes on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I, you know, I've got the door open for wind in here. Okay. I'll go, I'll, I'll shut them off. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Muting himself, I think.
Are you able to, can, uh, I get some feedback? Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, it's in and out?
It's in and out, but it's better.
Okay. Let me just, this computer.
There we go. That's better.
Okay, good. We're back. All right. So I lost track. So we're on the, uh, this question was regarding meetings, uh, uh, or do we have any further? There was something in my calendar. Mr. Bakken?
Worship, originally we were scheduled for meeting June, um, May the twenty fifth.
Mr. Bakken is breaking up. We can't hear him.
Yeah, now you're breaking up.
Uh, your worship, again, because of, of the current circumstances, we're trying to remain to the one a month, um, uh, meeting schedule at this time until the province formally comes off a state of emergency. We've anticipated that for June. If something happens earlier, we can revisit it. But at this point, we're trying to moderate workloads and trying to operate within the existing framework. But we certainly are very cognizant of the, uh, level of the workload council's facing.
Okay. I raised this, uh, from the perspective of, um, having a Zoom meeting that's gonna go for eight to ten hours. It's a long Zoom meeting. So I'm just wondering if we maybe should have a second meeting in May.
Well, Mr. Bakken, as far as the agenda, looking for the next, uh, meeting, is it, uh, uh, if we get through this one, there's a lot on this, uh, agenda. Do you, do you feel that, uh, we'd be needing a meeting? If we did, we could always call one.
Uh, that's correct, your worship. We could, we could call one. The challenge we faced today was the delegations. Uh, we're trying to, um, moderate those. And as well, I think once we get to the bylaws and some of the reports, hopefully they go a bit more quickly. We've had some really good discussion. But I think we wanna, I would suggest we see what time we finish today and then take that into account before we set the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on E three. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to E four. It will be a Tera Road completion amenity policy. This is for receipt. Could I have a, uh, motion, please? Council Woodward moves it. Council Davis seconds, uh, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Any favor?
Are there any opposed?
I had a question.
Oh, okay. It just, there was a delay, I guess. Sorry. I see two popped up after, uh, after, it's a little bit of a delay. Uh, Council Woodward, you were, yeah, you're good? Okay, Council Richter?
Yeah, it's just, it's just receiving the policy for imp, uh, for information. Shouldn't we be receiving and approving the policy?
That's up to council. At this point, um, the motion is to receive. And, uh, if council wishes to adopt or approve, then that would be a.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll, uh, we can have some discussion, but I would like to see us receive and approve. And I'm willing to move that or second it or whatever.
Well, we'll do one at a time, then. We've got the receipt on the, on the floor. If somebody wants to move, uh, adoption, then we can deal with that separately. Council Woodward, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make you aware, Mr. Mayor, in case I don't hit the button fast enough. But, uh, assuming receipt is gonna be successful, hopefully only one person votes against receipt. Then, uh, we can, I would, it's my intention to move adoption of the policy document as drafted.
As a separate motion. Okay.
As a separate motion, yeah.
Okay, so, so with that, I will call the question on receipt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, receipt carries unanimously. Uh, Council Woodward, did you wish to?
Yeah, so I'll make that motion to, uh, adopt the policy document as drafted.
Is there a second? Council Richter seconds.
I have, I have no comments to speak to it. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, any discussion? Council Ferguson?
Just, it's a, more of a matter of housekeeping was, if I may, through the chair of staff, was there a reason why this wasn't received and adopted? If I may, through the chair?
Mr. Bakken?
Uh, your worship, nothing in particular. I think it's because of the history of the number of policies we've had and submissions we've had. We weren't sure if there was to be any further requirements. It appears there's not, so it's completely in order then to adopt the policy.
Uh, so just a supplemental, this, this wouldn't be any, any undue hardship on staff. Everything's in place regarding the report. Did you hear that?
Yes, your worship. The, the policy from a regulatory point of view is fine. Uh, the other implications of the policy, uh, would be left to council. I think we've already addressed those in terms of the economic environment and the, the impact.
Very good. Thank you.
Any others? I see Council Woodward, your hand is still up. Did you wish to speak? No. Okay, just maybe we remove, lower your hand. Uh, Council Long?
Okay, are you able to hear me?
Yes, yeah.
On page five, and now that we're talking about implementation, there, there's a whole section of this report that talks about implementation. And, uh, there are three options that I can see, uh, the three alternate approaches. So maybe can staff elaborate a little bit on how we choose one of these, uh, three options or they're just there for information?
Uh, Mr. Seifi?
Actually, your worship, the, uh, implementation, as has been discussed, is a secondary consideration for council and, uh, subject to additional direction to staff. Uh, the policy itself, as presented, is intended to put into place a amenity type policy that will then go towards receiving contributions from developers and development that are processed and presented to council. How the contributions are to be extended and, and, uh, the actual policy implemented. As I said, is a matter of, uh, secondary consideration by council and direction to staff. And that's why there is the, uh, the potential options outlined in the, the staff report where the council wishes to proceed concurrently, uh, which requires borrowing or where the council wishes to defer until such time as, uh, sufficient funds have been collected to continue with the, uh, the implementation or a hybrid of the two. These are the, uh, the three scenarios that Council Long referenced on page five of the staff report.
Thank, thank you.
That, that's why it's, it's certainly is clear to me at least, uh, that it's not ready to be implemented until staff come back. Uh, with, well, I guess this, receiving the report gives staff some direction to work on some other, uh, aspects of the policy that will, will be workable to the township. So I think it's very much premature to implement it at this point. And, uh, it should probably be referred back to staff. And I'll try that motion.
Thank you. Um, Council Richter?
Yeah, um, I'm not supportive of referring it back to staff. That's all we've been doing is punting it back to staff. Let's just get on with having a policy. And, uh, once the policy is adopted, which I hope we will do today, at that point, if there's further considerations for staff to bring back to us during the budget process, like the three funding options, uh, then at that point, it's appropriate to deal with those funding options in that venue. Uh, I did have a question relative to the policy, though, with regards to the, uh, financial, uh, costs indicated in it under four point three and also four point nine. So they're using a, um, a twenty twenty, uh, land value of three point two million. Uh, given the, um, COVID situation, is that still a realistic and valid land cost? Or should we be lowering it? Or if we don't know, because there's still so many unknowns, um, of course, I'm assuming it's possible for us to go back and amend those, uh, dollar values in the future. Is that correct?
Mr. Bakken?
Yes, your worship. What we're seeing right now is that there's a lot of activity still in those ranges. Um, we're not certain, so we're not certain if that's gonna be maintained or whether it's going to have to be revisited. Um, but as the counselor points out, it can be revisited. So once we have some, uh, uh, some experience with it, we can then reassess it and go forward by simple policy modification.
Okay, so this is a policy. Okay, so this is a policy, it can be modified, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yes, um, my, my, I just wanted to confirm that and in ties to what, uh, Counselor Long was talking about. This is a, a, uh, approving a policy to collect money to help with, uh, development of arterial roads in the Willoughby area. But it, it, we have not made a decision, and that's not happening today, on how that money will be spent and how we'll proceed forward, so it does feel like we might be passing the policy today, but there's still a lot of work to do, a lot of discussion to be had on how we will actually implement the policy. This is just simply agreeing that we'll collect money.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Counselor, was that Counselor Long is opposed?
That's me, nay.
Yep, okay. I don't see any others opposed, it carries, uh, with that Counselor Long opposed. We want to E five, uh.
May I, may I ask for a, request a clarification?
Yes.
Uh, because of the fact that the report or the policy was presented for council's consideration and not necessarily adoption, uh, the question that comes up now for staff is the implementation date. I assume the effective date is today, because today is, is when council has actually adopted the policy. Would council like to consider any kind of, uh, a notification period, typically with, with policies such as this, there's, uh, a notification as far as, uh, applications that may be in stream and not have gone to council, you know, there was a pre-council, so there's been no readings granted. But as you know, typically financing for development applications are arranged fairly early in the process. So I'm wondering if council wishes to direct count, direct staff to, to consider an effective date in terms of the implementation of, of the, the policy as far as collection of the fees are concerned.
Thank you, uh, I think it's appropriate, uh, certainly in line with other CAC policies that we've had or other similar policies. Generally understand it's been a year given, and I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that, I thought that was in this, but, uh, Mister Safi, is it something that perhaps, uh, either we can decide it tonight, obviously, or, um, is it something you can bring back, uh, some recommendations based on prior, prior practice? Mister Safi?
Yes, thank you, worship, it really is, is, there's, there's no, uh, there is some consistency, but there's, it, it doesn't bind council to any particular path or method, because as you can appreciate, this is a, a council policy that is subject to contributions being made at the time of applications proceeding with council for, for consideration of rezoning. So council is, is, uh, able to determine what's an appropriate notification based on, on what council deems to be a, a public benefit or public interest. So it could be six months, historically with such things as the development cost charges, it's effective, uh, one year after the adoption. But those are, are more sort of, uh, rigid, uh, frameworks pursuant to legislation. Uh, and, and it requires second grandfather provisions to be extended. Uh, with, with policies such as this, uh, I would suggest that, you know, it's really a matter for council to decide as to how they wish to proceed, staff could bring a report forward at the next meeting with some, uh, suggestions. Uh, but again, in the meantime, between now and next meeting, uh, there could be applications coming in, or there could be applications going to council at the next meeting for first and second reading. And staff, uh, would appreciate some, some guidance as to how to treat those applications going forward.
Great, thank you, there's a speaker's list, we'll hear from council, and then, uh, I'll come to determination, Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, so I think I wanna appreciate, Ramon, for raising that, I think the staff report was, was pretty clear that anybody who hasn't achieved a, a public hearing, um, would be subject to the, to the new amenity fee, I think the difference here versus DCCs or CACs, which are phased in on a, uh, increases are phased in on a three-month basis, um, is that when we defer it for, uh, some period of time, uh, we actually are raising the fee on everybody that comes after, uh, the way this program works, similar to a Greenway amenity program that would be brought in halfway through the development of the neighborhood plan, which is what we're doing here, obviously, this should have been done at the beginning, uh, like we're trying to do, or hopefully we will do in Brookswood Furniture, now that we've adopted this policy as a potential framework to help solve the problem. Um, so if we have one that's coming forward in a, a month from now, and we don't wanna necessarily negotiate a new document, I think something along the lines of, uh, three months might make sense, as opposed to, you know, some suggestions around six or twelve, trying to mirror other policies which don't operate the same way, and I'll repeat it for everyone's information, such that if we defer that for people that are six months from now, the people that come later will have to pay more, because we're reducing the effective quantity of acreage that will be contributing to this program, I don't find that to be fair, this should have been done a long time ago, we've actually increased the fees on people by even taking a year to do this, um, you know, why do in two weeks what you can do in a year, I guess? So for here, I don't wanna delay it any further, but there is some reasonableness to raising that concern, so I don't see the need to make another report or come back with a bunch of recommendations and debate that perhaps council now would consider a, a three-month effective date from today, which would give people essentially till the September timeframe and when it would start, and I, I would make that motion, Mister Mayor, if you think that's a reasonable solution, others maybe wanna comment first, but that seems to address the concern while not continuing to impose a higher fee on people that come after, thank you.
Fair enough, we'll go through the list, uh, Counselor Whit, Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I appreciate, um, uh, Mister Safi raising the issue as well, and I do think there should be an appropriate notification period. Um, I agree with some of the sentiments that, uh, Counsel Woodward suggested, but I don't think three months is long enough. Um, I think there's gonna be, uh, many years of still building out that, uh, area and community. Um, so I, I'd like to, uh, suggest that we make it December thirty first. Um, so the start of the new year of, uh, twenty twenty one, particularly in light of the issue we've been facing with COVID and some of the things going on, I think to give us a full six months to the end of December would be more appropriate.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, um, I actually don't agree with either of those, and I actually think it should be coming into effect next meeting. Uh, the i- items that are on table today, not fair probably to those items, but it's not like we haven't been uh, sending signals and consulting with the development industry for the last year, year and a half on getting this work cap in place. So, my suggestion would be it becomes effective next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Yes, um, I, I think that, uh, we are in difficult, different and difficult times with the COVID and, uh, the impact on businesses and, uh, people involved with land use and other things in our community, not just limited land use. Uh, I think, yeah, whether it's, uh, one year or December thirty first, I don't, we would all love it to be, um, sooner than later, but these are difficult, extraordinary times, uh. The market, uh, will have to adjust accordingly, whether it's land, uh, sales or land prices or other things that they'll have to adjust to, and also their clientele in future, and we can't really predict that, uh, what's going to happen, so uh, I'm certainly in favor of something, um, giving some time for the industry to adjust accordingly.
Thank you, uh, Counsel, uh, Mister Safi, some comments?
Thank you, worship, the, uh, I just wanted to clarify, the request that I had, uh, put in front of council for effective date relates to the application dates, because the policy within it has provisions for it to not apply to in-stream applications. If you look at page seven, four point one three, it states that in-stream applications where the required public hearing has at the time of adoption of this policy been concluded, shall not be subject to the provisions of this policy. So if we have received, if an application has received public hearing and is post-public hearing, uh, it will not be applica- it will not be required to follow the provisions of this policy. So what I've requested is to do with the effective date of, uh, the policy as it relates to the application date. So when somebody comes forward with an application tomorrow, should this be effective? Or as part of the, uh, the, the considerations of council, two suggestions have been put forward, one, three months from now, application comes forward, and then it becomes effective. And then the other one, six months from now, the application comes forward, and then it becomes effective. So it's the application date as opposed to, uh, in-stream or not in-stream.
Okay, thank you, uh, so, uh, we've, we've heard everything from, uh, do it now, uh, do it in three months, do it in six or seven months, uh, so I think the way to deal with this is by motion. And so, Counselor Woodward, uh, I'll let you make your motion, if it's defeated, then we'll move on, if it's approved, then we got it, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair, I mean, I, I think it's, um, you know, I would rather take three months, I think obviously I'm one zero. It should apply to anyone who has not achieved public hearing, not application dates, that's not what we were contemplating, at least that's not what I was contemplating. You can't make an application for the rest of the year, and then, and then suddenly you don't have to pay this fee, that, that will raise the fee on everybody who comes after by quite a margin or potential margin, depending on the quantity of applications we get, development is not slowing down during COVID, so I'd like to make, I'll speak to it more, I'd like to make the motion that if you have not achieved public hearing within three months of today, that you are subject to the work cap amenity fee, thank you.
I'll second that for discussion.
So I'll speak to that, uh, Mister Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you, so, I, I think the logic for this is, uh, pretty, pretty simple. Uh, I don't view this as a COVID issue, I guess every time you don't like something, you can just mention COVID now. Um, you know, it's, COVID's not affecting the Mitchell group or the Infinity group or Landstone Homes, it's not affecting the development community in the sense that development is not slowing down, and if you add a per acre amenity fee to that they get back if they only have a true, and then the way the program works, uh, it's different than a, than a straight-up charge. The idea that this is a COVID issue is absurd. Um, you know, the, the council's taken a year to get to this point, and now we're gonna cost the program another year. I mean, for me, I have a sense of urgency around solving this problem, and I recognize that maybe some of my colleagues just simply don't have a sense of urgency and wanna cost the program another year, uh, to delay it even further, uh, than has already been happening for the past decade or decade and a half. So I, I, I'm pretty adamant that we've gotten to this point, we've agreed that the framework will work, can work. We have to now allow it to work, not just delay it because of some statement about COVID or economic development, development is not slowing down. Uh, it will not hamper this, this is a, a fee to solve the problem that developers actually want solved, uh, in regards to selling units in a neighborhood and a part of Langley that doesn't have basic roads and sidewalks for kids to get to school. Uh, this has to be solved, and we need a revenue stream to start to look at how to solve it. And delaying it for six months to a year based on application date is completely wrong. It has to be based upon the CAC program, which is based on you achieving a certain status for your development after a certain period of time. Counselor Richter is correct that we have been signaling this, UDI's been informing their membership on this program for a very long time. Everyone's aware of it, we're not receiving a lot of objection, no development corporation that I've heard from is asking for this. This is just coming out of nowhere as an attempt to further delay this program, so I would ask that council accept this compromise. We can start to work on solving the problem, uh, where our development community, development industry is not objecting, thank you.
Thanks, uh, Counsel Richter?
Yeah, well, I, I, the policy we just adopted is quite clear, as Mister Safi said. Uh, item four point one three, in-stream applications where required public hearing has at the time of adoption of this policy been concluded, shall not be subject to it. So, I, I, I mean, I don't think it's fair to the public hearings that we're having tonight, but I suppose if I had to compromise, I'd rather go with a three months than a six months or a year. But I, I really think we should be putting it in place for the next meeting, I mean, it's a, it's a month from now already, the next meeting.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, I'm gonna call a question, all those in favor?
Oh, oh, Mister Mayor, yeah, I, I think I had my, my hand up.
Well, there it is, yeah.
There it is.
Counselor Ferguson, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just, it was there, so we're looking at three months now, there's no amendment?
Well, it's, we'll see how this motion, um, goes through, if it goes through, uh, it's three months, if not, then, um, interesting.
Well, I think, well, then the motion goes through, I think that, what we've done in the past, we've just basically, uh, looked at a, at a, at, at another thing, so I mean, I know the, the option of, uh, of December thirty first, so can I make amendment that we change it from the three months to the December thirty first, uh, twenty twenty?
Um, okay, on, on, just let me, um, explain, on the procedural bylaw, yes, you can make amendments, however, uh, if the amendment, we're, we're doing the same thing then, we just go through this one, if it fails, then I would ask for a second motion. So I think it's, it's achieving the same thing, but Counselor Woodward has this one up for three months, let's deal with this one, if it doesn't pass, then that, then I'll go to you, Counsel Ferguson, if that's.
Okay, well, no, I did, I did wanna say that there's, to mean, no one wants to see, uh, uh, people not having routes to school, and nobody wants to see, uh, cliffs or, 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 or potholes in the road, or, or, you know, a number of other things like that, nobody, nobody wants that. But I think that, uh, I am not an economist, and I don't sit on the board of directors of UDI, so I have no idea what, uh, their members or builders or developers or others are doing right now. What I do know is what I guess we all hear on the news, that some people aren't working as much. Some people are not able to afford their mortgages and, and other things, so those that want to wish to purchase a property, or it's, it's a townhouse or a condominium or something else, or a re- a regular house, I mean, it would be tougher and tougher and tougher that, that the longer this COVID goes on. And I, I don't know what the impact of, of those that are, uh, developing property. Yes, some people have, um, uh, pre-purchased stuff a year ago, we understand that. Whether they're able to follow through with the, the payments, the mortgages, the down payment, all the other economic thing, I'm not a banker either, I don't know. So, this is just, we're following through with also industry things that have been presented already, either on the newspaper or on, online or on television station, other, that there is an impact on the economy, so all I'm saying is that, I won't be supporting this, but I will see support, uh, maybe something similar December thirty first, twenty, but I certainly, that's my only, if we didn't have this COVID, I wouldn't be saying that, that's my only point.
Fair enough, all, all comments are, are valuable, and everyone has a right to, to, uh, make their, uh, uh, comments, whether it's COVID or not, it's just, these are opinions, and every opinion is valuable, Counselor Long?
Well, your worship, we didn't call for a second, I wanted to refer this.
No, I asked, uh, I, I had a discussion with Counsel Ferguson on that we deal with this one, and if it failed, then he could, it's the same, same effect, and he agreed.
We're awf- awfully confused, so, yeah, yeah, please ask. Didn't hear Counselor Woodward say three months, uh, I heard him say something about public hearings.
Okay, so, I, I'll have the motion, uh, read out.
Yeah, what did, yeah, reporting on, thank you.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Bauer, could you please read the motion?
Uh, so the motion would be that, uh, it would be three months for today that the public hearing occurred, so my understanding is that the public hearing must occur prior to three months to today, and then after that, the policy would apply.
The policy, and the policy comes into effect in three months for those applications that have achieved.
Public hearing.
At that, within that time, at that time.
Yeah.
Past that time, okay, thank you. Okay, Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, it's people that have not achieved public hearing within three months, yeah, so we adopted the policy, so I'm gonna refer to counsel, I'm just gonna reiterate some of the arguments here, that, um, some of the key points, that this is not operating like a CAC program, like an ECC program, where there is, uh, it's, it's attempting to, a rebate program similar to Greenway amenities, money will flow back to proponents over time. Uh, you, this, what this is doing, i- if it's not, if three months is, is determined to be to the end of the year, just for the sake of doing it, I guess, the, it's gonna be imposing a higher fee on the people after that date, and I don't find that to be fair. This, this is a great, this is a program that's been designed as a flowback, different than maybe the version in Brookswood Furniture. It is not a fee, it's not a one-time fee that they haven't accounted into their pro forma, that's not how it works. Uh, you know, Ken Mitchell and Bonkey's not having a problem paying his mortgage, so this isn't an economic development issue, this is a fairness issue. By, by finding the compromise around applications that may be almost to the council table and going back to, to modify their agreements, that makes sense, but that, it doesn't make sense to push it any further than that. It's fundamentally unfair to those people that come after by reducing the quantity of acreage, so I'm asking council to, to not impose a higher fee on people that come after. That is what you're doing if you push it to December, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any further, um, uh, see Counsel Long, your hand is still up, is it for a second time, or, okay, no, okay, thank you. So I'll call a question on this motion, uh, all those in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Okay, opposed? Counselor Whitmarsh opposed, um, Counselor Long, are you opposed? Counselor Ferguson's opposed? Anybody else? So carries.
Thank you.
Move on to E six, and this is the property tax deferment program, and it's, uh, oh, I think.
E five, isn't it?
E five, sorry, I missed one. Yeah, you're right. I've been scribbling on my agenda here. Can't even read it anymore. Uh, COVID nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of infor- point of information. I guess we're on, I can't see the screen, of course. Uh, maybe I should be looking at the screen. Uh, what was the, can you just give me the vote counting? Was it five, four, or?
There was three, six, three.
What was it?
Six, three.
Three?
Three, four, yeah, yeah.
So, and can you give me the, 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 just curious on the, on the, who voted where?
Ferguson, Long, Whitmarsh opposed. Okay.
And everybody else?
Well, yeah, that's who is opposed. Okay, so. So, E five is a financial update. It's a good report and it's for receipt. Could I have a motion for receipt?
Come on.
Also Davis, second? Could I have a second or? I need a second. I'm not hearing or seeing.
Ferguson, Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson, seconds, thank you. And Counselor Richter?
Uh, yes, I, I had some questions around this and I thank staff very much for, uh, putting that together and bringing it to us. Now, on page one of the report, it says, uh, down further to the end of the page. The model assumes that facilities will remain closed to the end of twenty twenty. Is that a realistic assumption now that some, um, lightening of the COVID restrictions are going to start occurring? As of the end of this week? That's my first question. So m- maybe we should just go one at a time with those questions?
Sure. Mr. Becken?
Uh, thank you, your worship. The, the purpose of the reference, um, is to really indicate that there are ways to deal with the issue. And what we really see just by way of an overview is that our, our cash flow requirements are okay, not, not stellar, but okay. And when we look at our revenue, uh, less our expenses, the effect of the crisis so far has been to hit our revenue in, in many ways. Um, there are some projections that's the revenue impacting property taxes. However, property taxes generally will be recoverable, but maybe at a later date. So it almost affects our cash flow. As to our user, uh, fee programs or other revenue, as the Director of Finance would reference it. That's where we're most likely to experience the greatest, uh, I guess, impact. Um, if we were to model it and estimate it now, it looks like we'd be in that eight to ten million dollar range for decreased revenue. So the model that is referenced for illustration shows that if we simply did not open those facilities that we traditionally have to subsidize, we would be fine. So I guess that's a good news story. It's quite correct, though, to say that going forward, then, do we really expect that we wouldn't open those facilities? And no, we, we think there would be some opening of the facilities. In fact, what staff are doing at this point is actually continuing to model and effectively going forward with, uh, with some, uh, analysis to determine which programs are going to be revenue neutral. That is that effectively they would cover their variable costs. That means that the cost to operate those programs would break even or, or actually provide a bit of a, a surplus. We're working on that, uh, now, probably with a better sense of what will be taking place in June because there's other, uh, other organizations that too are doing those modeling. And we hope to have some level of, I guess, consistency across the region in both the, the terms of the openings and terms of the approach. So at this point, uh, if this report is received, staff would continue to go forward and would instead, uh, look at which programs or operations can operate with revenue neutrality. And, uh, see what the rest of the region is doing and then continue to update council with a view to gradual openings where we can actually do so where it's fiscally responsible. Of course, we can go beyond that with council's direction. So then going to be the issue of, well, where do we find the revenue from or the, uh, how do we make up that difference?
Okay, so this is sort of an ongoing assessment thing. And, and that's very good because I, I, I really, I'm quite concerned about us opening facilities that could lead to a spike or a second wave of, uh, COVID infections. Uh, particularly in the populations that are most vulnerable. I'm thinking specifically here of like pool programs for the seniors that we uh, usually run at, um, the Blair Pool. Okay, so my second question has to do with page two. And again, down towards the bottom, you've got, um, a series of projects, first priority, second priority, third priority and fourth priority. Has this classification of projects already been done? And if it hasn't been done, when will it be done?
Mr. Becken?
That's correct, your worship. This is the model we're actually operating on to make sure we maintain our cash flow. So I would say it's underway. I mean, it's a continual matter to look at which projects there are. So for example, we're going to begin to see some major roadwork on two hundred street with a culvert that has to be replaced. Um, the good news is the pricing is substantially lower than before. Uh, the bad news is it's still going to be a million dollars or so. So there's an example of how we're applying this, this hierarchy going forward. And we continue to do so on a, uh, week by week and month by month basis.
Okay. My third question is, uh, pertains to page five, about halfway down the page, under the title, "The Bad." It says, um, all other, uh, the township will potentially have to pay out twenty million more than collected for twenty twenty. But my question is, why is the township on the hook for delinquent taxes owing to other authorities? And I'm assuming this includes, um, Metro, um, well, the school board has already deferred theirs, but Metro, Fraser, uh, uh, Fraser Valley Library, like, it doesn't seem fair to me that they've assessed us on a levy for this year, but if we're not collecting the taxes, we still have to pay the full levy. Is there any way that we can appeal this?
Mr. Becken?
Uh, your worship, effectively not at this point. I believe the theory is that the, uh, government is relying on municipal liquidity to actually assist those organizations that don't have the necessary liquidity to proceed. So, uh, there has been some deferment, as was referenced with the school board. Um, there are other items that are being looked at, but at this point, um, we've modeled our liquidity and as we've said, we are in an okay position to the end of the year. We anticipate receiving additional tax revenue next year. So if you effectively deferred, but we think we're still okay with that, with the deferment of the school taxes. And other matters, I think the government is saying they're looking at other levels of government to help the, um, liquidity of other organizations such as TransLink and whatnot. So that is the reason. Uh, do we see any changes in that? Not likely, as we understand that uh, all levels of government are straining under some of the, uh, the challenges we're facing.
Okay.
Maybe just, uh, just, uh, further to that, just want to clarify with Mr. Becken, um, uh, just give me a little bit, bit of leeway here. This, the province has extended the deadline for the municipalities to pay the school taxes to the end of the year. Is that correct? And that's one hundred percent of the school taxes. So we will be collecting, uh, hopefully, and the report suggested up to seventy-five percent of the school taxes will still be collected and become part of our revenue, which will then be deferred till the end of the year. And that money I would think would be assumed to cover some of these other, uh, eight, other, uh, areas where we collect on, on behalf of other agencies. So.
Yeah, but we still have to make up what we owe the school board if we're paying other people out of the school board monies.
That's right. But by the end of the year, we hope to collect our taxes too. So it's, it's one of those, I, you know, I, I suppose the, the province had it under their authority to defer school taxes. They could do that, but perhaps the other ones they felt would, municipalities will be able to cover out of some of that deferment. But yes, you're, you're correct. It does come due at the end of the year, but I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, so yeah, carry on, uh, Counsel Richter.
Okay, well, I, I'm hoping that, um, you know, like, why should we have to pay Metro? If we don't have the money to pay Metro, as an example. Uh, and it's clear from this that that's the intent. Uh, my next question pertains to page six. Uh, on the first set of charts, there's, uh, quite a dip in the month of April. Uh, the blue line dips down below zero. And I'm just wondering why it's negative? Like, did we, how did we generate negative monies in April?
Refunds, uh, Mr. Becken, is that refunds?
That's correct, your worship. When the recreation centers were, um, put in hiatus, there were still people that had paid for programs had to be refunded. So those refunds are being shown. I think we're getting closer to getting back towards zero on some of those. And as was referenced in the chart below that, the impact of the, um, payroll savings isn't helping, it's starting to help, uh, at this point.
Okay. And then my last question pertains to page seven, again, about, uh, halfway, a little over halfway down. It says, once the new rates for TransLink and the township take effect, the township may see a drop in development revenue. Ta- staff need to be aware of this potential revenue pothole during the twenty twenty-one budget. And as, if I'm understanding this correctly, this is because, uh, people are fast-tracking all their applications through now. So that they don't have to pay CACs or, or, I guess, the
ECCs.
DCCs or things like that. Like, I, I think we're already subsidizing uh, the, the industry, the construction industry quite substantially. And this is why I wasn't really keen on giving them a, another three months deferral, because I'm sure in the next three months, they're gonna fast-track a bunch more of them through. But I'm just wondering if we've, um, developed any kind of modeling about how significantly the development applications will drop off after September.
Mr. Becken?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, at this point, it's a work in progress and, and the, the statement was quite correct that from the previous Metro Vancouver DCCs, we saw a bit of a, a bulge. Uh, we expect that as we go forward, we'll begin to see a bit of a decrease. To date, the township's been trying to predict that. However, our revenues have remained very strong. In fact, our, our development applications and DCC contributions are, uh, I think, uh, almost a million dollars now, uh, early in the, in the month at this point, which is quite unusual for us. So uh, I, I say that as an example that at this point, we would not be expecting much of a, a pothole. However, having said that, times will change as time goes on. And we have to be modeling that continually and advising council once we have a better forecast. So right now it looks incredibly good, but we don't believe it will remain that good, uh, throughout the, the fall.
Well, and, and I want to thank staff again. Um, this report is reassuring to me that, uh, we're, it's not gonna be as good as it has been in previous years, but at least it's not going to be a very um, negative or horribly negative situation. So I thank staff for putting this report together.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Kuntz?
Yes, thank you for the report. Um, my question is on page seven and, um, it's the, the priority projects. And, um, I, I'm assuming that the map improvement, um, is probably, it's underway and I've been down there and it looks, you know, really great. I don't know if it's finished. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to also, um, it, it hasn't been shared a, a whole lot, but you know, Langley is getting the, uh, the, the world track and field championship trials in twenty-two and twenty-three and, um, which is just a fantastic opportunity for our, our township. But I'm just wondering where we're at with, with the, um, the map improvement. And, you know, what's the likelihood of that, you know, not being completed, you know, I'm sure it will be completed in time, but you know, just kind of wanted to get an update on that.
Mr. Becken?
Your worship, going by memory, I guess what we should have added is that any project that was actually committed, contractually committed to it proceed. So that was an example of why the work is going on. It has been contractually committed to it and proceeding. And then a hierarchy will come into place. Um, so as I understand it, that one, uh, I think would be unaffected because, uh, of the contractual commitments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions, so, uh, just, I'll just call the question. Uh, do we, do we see this? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's received unanimously. Now we go to E six. And this is property tax deferment program, twenty twenty, uh, and COVID nineteen. The, uh, this is for receipt and endorsement. I think this is great if we can get the information out to our residents, uh, as quickly as possible and, uh, as efficiently as possible, that perhaps, uh, many will elect to defer, which then, uh, the province provides the tax revenue to the municipality. So I would ask for a motion on E six.
Oh, man.
Moved by Counsel Ferguson, seconded by Counsel Kuntz, uh, discussion, seeing none? I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Is my mic not working?
Okay, I don't, there's hands. Counsel Richter, I see your hand, but I guess there's a delay here sometimes and the hands coming up. Counsel, did you have a question on this, Counsel Richter?
This is the property, this is E six we're referring to now?
Yes, E six, yeah.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to know if we're going to anticipate a much higher level of deferment. And also I have concerns, this is the first year this deferment prog- program is gonna be one hundred percent online. And I'm wondering how reliable that online system will be.
Yeah. So one thing to be aware of, if, if, uh, residents take advantage of the deferment program, the province then pays the municipality. So we don't lose revenue. We actually gain revenue from those that maybe have a hard choice. As far as, uh, being online for the first time, uh, Mr. Back or maybe, uh, I don't know who would be there to answer this question, Mr. Becken? Uh, how's that gonna work? And is there gonna be an option for those who maybe don't have access to internet or they can phone in and, and get some assistance?
Your worship, um, if they have access to the internet, the process would be to use the internet. If they did not, then there would maybe some other programs that would be effectively trying to do it for them on the internet. So we're really encouraging people to, uh, utilize the, the tools that we have. And again, as you referenced, but it's worth restating, this is a very important program because uh, it means that the province effectively pays to the communities, the township, for example, any, uh, tax monies that were deferred. More importantly, for the residents, then they avoid any penalty issues whenever they should do so. So they could defer it for one year, they could defer it perpetually if they meet the criteria. But by simply doing it for this year, it improves our revenues and they avoid any, uh, any, uh, tax penalties that may therefore result.
Okay, and, and the list of items then that's presented on, uh, uh, page four. What's the cost to the township of doing all those items?
Mr. Becken?
Uh, your worship, those are things we can achieve through our existing processes predominantly. So we're, we're using, uh, our existing communication channels, social media, and as well our existing book space that we may already have in any of the newspapers. So effectively, there might be some minor costs, but it would be relatively neutral to our other overall operations.
Okay. And what is the deadline for people to apply for this deferment?
Uh, for that, we'll have to bring Karen online and she can actually, uh, recite some of the technical issues.
Mr. Clare?
It's, it's ongoing, uh, through the, through the chair to Counsel Richter. It's ongoing as long as they apply in time such that we'll, we'll encourage people to apply early because they have to go through some eligibility criteria. And we want, we want to make sure that if they are not eligible, that they still have time to pay their taxes if they're going to do that as an alternative. So they, they have all the way up, they can literally uh, file an application on the due date. And as long as they're accepted by the province, they'll be okay.
Okay. And my final question is, can this or will this be expanded by the province to include businesses and not-for-profits?
It's, uh,
It's not looking like that, uh, right now. That's not what we're hearing through the, my, uh, colleagues in other municipalities. Um, the question was, a question was asked, uh, why is, um, why are, why is the province not providing any more substantive programs to the residential taxpayer for relief? And their response back to, uh, the questioner was because the residential taxpayer has the deferment program to use. So I think the province is actually really, really reliant on this deferment program. So I, based on that comment, I do believe that they will be prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Uh, yes, just.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Counsel Whitmarsh. Uh, Counsel Long was first. I'll, I'll go to Counsel Long then, then to you, sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, Counsel Long?
Yeah, just a minute of trouble here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm certainly supportive of this and I, and I appreciate the work that staff has done. It's something that was brought up right in the very beginning of the, of the pandemic. But we also passed a motion back in the very, call your worship, that we would entertain, or, you know, ask the province to, to relax some of the, the qualifications required to get onto this program. And I think that Metro is, has been following suit to some extent with that. So this, this effort, which, you know, hopefully we will approve, simply talks about the existing program. But maybe you could tell us from the metro's perspective or from the mayor's council, uh, are we gonna make any headway with the province for them to expand? Or, well, not, not actually expand, well, expand the program by reducing some of the requirements to qualify. Because right now, yeah, fifty-five or older, then you, the, the interest rate goes up and there's a few other things, but I mean, they could make.
Yeah, that's been brought up as Miss Sinclair, um, uh, referenced in her meetings. It's also been brought up in the, in the mayor's meetings and, and also in the, uh, conference call with the Minister, uh, Minister Robertson. And they've been pretty consistent on this, just as Miss Sinclair had, uh, had stated that this program is what they're relying on and, uh, they haven't. Uh, and we've asked that question too about expanding it for residential, expanding assistance for municipalities. So what they've done is they deferred our, our, uh, school tax, our requirement to pay the school tax upfront, even though we're collecting it. And, uh, they've, they've assisted, uh, commercial and business in deferring their tax till October, I believe. So uh, I don't know if they'll do anything more. Uh, certainly it's been brought up, um, meant, you know, numerous occasions, but, uh, at this point, we don't know. They're, uh, they haven't said. I think this is all we're getting basically at this point.
It's, it's a real win-win really because, oh, if you have, if you have to pay taxes, obviously you own a home. And if you own that home, then you can, you could put this on, of it. So anyway, I'm very supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, just a, uh, question to your, to, uh, your, through your worship of staff. And I'm certainly very supportive of this. I guess my question is, I just wasn't sure why, um, staff would need to have the endorsement from council to promote this, uh, program. It seems like we have lots of, uh, government programs and lots of things for our community and it, it doesn't feel like we always come back to council asking for endorsement from council. I'm just wondering why this is special in this case.
Mr. Becken?
Uh, thank you, your worship. We're, we're attempting to use council's resources to promote this story. Council has a number of, uh, Thank you, your worship. We're attempting to use councils' resources to promote this story. Council has a number of contacts on their social media lists and email lists and whatnot. So we're hopeful the council can actually forward this and encourage people through the media and through their connections to actually engage in this process because it's actually a win-win for for almost everyone.
Okay, so it's, so it's just, I guess, letting council be aware of it, that we can promote it. Is there, is there some form of official document or something that you would like council to circulate through their channels or do you just, or do we just send out our own message based on this particular executive summary?
Staff would be providing some material for us to forward on, but you certainly can let people know now that this has been, you know, something we're doing and encourage based on the report, but I would expect staff will give us something to to push out in our social media if we want to use it. Is that correct, Mr. Backen? And he's nodding, you're nodding yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. And we move on to E seven. This is a relation to the delegation earlier, and this is the report. We authorize staff to execute the drainage DCC front ending agreement with Mitchell Adam. Could I have a motion, please? Council Whitmarsh and Secondor is Council Davis. Discussion, Council Richter.
Yes, I would like to move a deferral of this to the next meeting and a request that the information requested by the delegation be shared with him.
Secondor to the deferral?
I'll second that.
This is Council Arneson, seconded.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I would like to speak to this because I I think the question of transparency is very important. Particularly when we're talking about properties that have been in the hands of people, small developers for a very long time. And I think they have the right to know the information that could affect their property before they're asked to to sign on to something. And the system as it's currently set up right now seems to favor the larger developers. And I I just think there needs to be more equity and more transparency for the smaller developers. A one-month delay is not going to make that big of a difference for the bigger developers. And it might bring peace of mind particularly to the 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 person who is the delegate because he's acting in a, in a role of trust as what did he, power of attorney for for his parents. So I would hope that people would support this deferral for one month. And and the request that the information he's defined, he specifically requested. Did he specifically request? The impact of the costs, the calculations for his parcel, how the costs were were determined and would be applied.
Thank you. Council Long.
Thanks, your worship. Well, there was, oh, in our package today that described the whole situation. So I'm not so sure staff can go much farther than that. And I was kind of hoping that there might have been an opportunity for staff to speak when the delegate was here, but can I get an idea from staff if more information can be shared or does the memo that came cover everything?
Mr. Seffy.
Thank you, your worship. The process is really not that complicated in terms of arriving at the numbers and how it's supposed to work. First of all, it's based on the legislation from the provincial government that a municipality is allowed to provide for a mechanism for cost recovery. And I realize that council is dealing with this at the at this stage in terms of E seven because there are two reports that are companions, if you will. The other one that actually requires a bylaw process is actually G one. And the two go hand in hand. This one requires a council resolution. The other one is actually a part of a bylaw process that requires the requisite readings. So first of all, it's based on provincial legislation. Secondly, we have a policy that provides for implementation of the provincial legislation at the local level. And thirdly, it's fairly straightforward in terms of how the numbers have been arrived at. And they have been shared with the delegate to the extent that they've been made available to the township, to the extent that the proponents are required to provide them to the township. So beyond that, if the delegate has asked for information that has not been provided, it's simply been a communication between themselves and and the proponents. And as staff understands it, the request has been for detailed information in terms of not the costing, because that's been made available to the township staff and has been shared with whoever's asked for it. But rather, I guess, whether a tender process has been followed in terms of coming up with those numbers and and whether the engineers who've come up with a design and and the the process that has been followed to engage a professional engineer to come up with a design, those have been discussions between the proponent and the delegate. And again, just to reiterate, I guess, the the process, a consultant engineer is required to be engaged. And the DWA process requires these processes to only be applicable in areas where we have enabled plan. Once we have enabled plan, the proponents are required to engage a service of a professional engineer who comes up with a design as to the servicing of whether it's a detention facility or a pump station or a pond or whatever that might be. That design then goes through the process of review based on our subdivision and development servicing by law. And then once it's verified by staff to meet our bylaw requirements, then there's an estimate that's provided. The estimate then is shared with the people within the neighborhood, within the catchment area, I should say, that are going to be subject to the charge. That cost is then divided by the area that is going to be receiving the benefit. So if you will, the the cost is A in terms of dollars, the area is B in terms of acres, and the charge per acre is just a division of A over B. And that information has been shared with whoever's asked for it. And as stated in the memo that Council Long kindly referenced that staff has provided, the the other matters that have been raised relate to, I guess, the validity of of the rates and the charge. And again, going back to the fundamental enabling legislation, it provides for a petition, it requires a petition successfully presented to council, which means that at least fifty percent of the people within the area having at least fifty percent of the assessed land value must have signed off on it. It doesn't require a proponent to go to every property owner because once they have achieved sufficiency, then they can just simply stop and just present their petition to council. Because then, again, similar to a local area service process, not everybody in the area needs to sign off on it as long as whoever wants to present it to council has approached and received the approval consent of the majority of the residents in the in the area, in the benefiting area. So that's the process that's been followed. And I don't know if there are any other specific questions, your worship, that council has, but I think that's it for now for me.
All, so Council Long, was that satisfy your?
I think the point here, your worship, is that there is no more information that we really can share. So I think we should carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
Hello. So yes, I know that I felt like other members of council did quite a bit of research on this and talked to both sides and tried to get a consensus on what was going on. I will, again, I was surprised that the delegate did come because quite a lot of information came to the delegate after he wrote the letter. And perhaps he was advised by his family whom we know, not the peer, but that's speculative. I think Mr. Seffy's answers clarified. It's not that difficult, the decision. The process is in place. And what else can staff do? And even over and above the the letter that the applicant, the delegate sent to us, there's been a lot of act and and activity and response. I think one thing that we cannot do and nor can many people do is is disclose information that is confidential. And I believe that that was requested by the delegate. And I'll use an example. If somebody complains about my property, my lawn was getting too long, I can't say to the bylaw people, give me the names and addresses and phone numbers of those people that complained. I believe that was the information the delegate was asking for. And he was told repeatedly that, no, we cannot disclose names and addresses and phone numbers of of people that are clients of organizations that are confidential, similar to a lawyer disclosing confidential information of their client. That cannot be and never has been the position of the township. But we did provide answers that also the property is also gonna go up and down. It's a, it's a win-win-win for the delegate. That's why I'm so confused by it. So I can't see a reason to let this off for another month.
Okay, thank you. We should, we are an hour behind, so maybe we can have our questions, comments short. Council Whitmarsh. Put it on to you.
Yeah, just in brevity of time, I I support us moving forward. I think everything was followed and I I think we should continue to go forward.
Thank you. Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I do understand the points. I'll try and make it brief. I was able to speak to the delegate today. And I didn't get the impression that he was raising these issues because he had a lack of things to do with his time. I I certainly feel for the fact that, you know, it's been expressed to him, it's a moot point because irrespective of whatever he thinks about the process and its application, that there is a fifty percent already who's agreeable to this. But I do wonder if I can ask through the mayor to Mr. Seffy, when was the last time that this specific process through the township of Langley's local government was reviewed? Do you?
It might be following provincial legislation. I'm not sure, Mr. Seffy.
Yes, indeed, your worship. This is, this is pursuant to provincial legislation. I, and it's a fairly new legislation as well, relatively speaking. In other words, it's less than ten years in in having become effective and enabling local governments to take advantage of this this cost recovery mechanism to allow for major trunk infrastructure to be provided ahead of development. So beyond that, you know, it it follows council policy. And and something I should have said earlier is regardless of what the estimates are at this point, your worship, the policy requires the actual costs at the end of the process to become applicable. So what the delegate said earlier was actually not correct in that the developer or the proponents, the front-enders have the ability to increase the costs if they so wish. In other words, build it up. That's not correct. The actual costs based on a tender process will be what is gonna be ultimately used. And they cannot exceed more than ten percent of the estimated cost. Otherwise, we would have to go back and get the consent of of the area again. So it has to be either what the estimate was or lower or no more than ten percent above. Otherwise, it has to go back again.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you for that. But I did have one further question of clarification. So I'm I'm thinking in my mind, I think relative to what he was suggesting, or maybe I'm just interpreting some of his comments. So the formula that goes forward is more or less based on the total cost divided by your land base equals how much each one is apportioned as a cost. But that makes me wonder whether or not there shouldn't be some implication as to use because maybe some of the properties could be put to a higher density use and would achieve heightened value, I would say, from the process relative to somebody else who, for whatever reason, either didn't wish to develop or wish to develop at a lower density for their own reasons. So we could clarify that?
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, again, this this is following provincial legislation. And if there is a need for a revisitation, then certainly we can make that an inquiry to the province. This tool has been used extensively in the township of Langley, in particular with respect to detention facilities that are that that have significant costs. And it has not become an issue in the past because they have followed provincial legislation. And I appreciate the point that Councilor Arneson is making in that some properties may have higher value, but this is actually based on stormwater management and stormwater runoff. And I guess to some extent, it doesn't really matter whether something has a higher value or not, they're paying their share of the costs. And I think one could argue that the best way of allocating those costs is actually area-based because you know, what, how large of a parcel you have is is directly related to or commensurate with how much runoff you might generate.
Okay, thank you. Council Richter.
Yes. So the email that was sent to us or the memo that was sent to us from staff, which refers to the fifty percent of properties representing fifty percent of the assessed value, is that from provincial legislation or is that part of or is that our policy position?
Your worship, that's provincial legislation.
Okay, so we would have to lobby the provincial government to change that because I think that that is very much driving the inequity aspect of this. Because in an area, fifty percent basically is half of the people and and they can determine what's gonna go forward without the other half even knowing it ahead of time. I'm very concerned that he was not included in the discussions. I think he should have been. He has a a sizable property there that that should have been consulted. And I'm thinking that out of a sense of fairness and equity and also transparency that we really should defer this and arrange for him to get more information. And this may, this practice may have been in place for ten years. But this is the first time anybody has come to us, to my recollection, and said, hey, I've been left out and that's not right.
Thank you. So you know, for the discussion, I'll call the question on the deferral. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Me myself. So Councilor, Mayor Froze, Council Kuntz. Council Ferguson's opposed. Council Long, were you opposed?
Well, I actually had my hand up to speak, but
Oh, I didn't see it again. Sorry. But I think I have a question.
The votes been called.
Okay, so Council Long, I didn't, are you opposed?
I am opposed.
So Council Long, Council Ferguson, Mayor Froze, Council Kuntz. Anybody else opposed? Motion carries on five to four to defer for one month.
Thank you.
To the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. We move on to bylaws of first and second readings. This is F one. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis moves as secondor, ever secondor? Council Kuntz, any discussion? Seeing Council Woodward, your little hand isn't up. There you go.
Yeah, so I think I gotta get faster. I just saw it pretty small on my monitor. I gotta
Yeah, it's
I need a bigger version of this raise the hand thing. Okay, so this one here, I wanted to ask a few questions through the staff. Is there, is there any legality or any issues with us sending this back to make it a mixed-use development that would be more appropriate for a walkable neighborhood? Actually, have it be a decent development? Would that be lethal given the designation of the community plan set at sensi strip malls to make it something more livable, more walkable and mixed-use? Would that be legal?
Mr. Seffy. I believe we can, we can refer this back, but
Certainly, council is is not obligated to follow the designation of the naval plan and and can make a determination to amend that. That would be good.
I'll wait for this to be resolved. It's my, it's my intention to make a motion to refer this development back to make it a proper mixed-use development with commercial on the ground floor of a of a size and character that we worked with opponent and determined by staff. And I'll speak to that motion when I get a chance to make it.
Mister, or sorry, Council Richter, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I'm not opposed to sending it back either. I had a question with regards to the public commentary that's come through around the intersection at two oh fourth and eightieth avenue. And maybe through you to Mr. Seffy, you know, Mr. Mayor. Are, is there going to be a light, a traffic light or a roundabout put in at that intersection?
Mr. Seffy? Eightieth and two oh four?
I'm just looking at the slides, your worship, to see if I can have the answer. I believe ultimately it will be signalized, but I'm just looking for the appropriate slides to make that confirmation. Just bear with me. Signalization, yes, signal.
And, and that will occur concurrently with this project?
Because of the fact, your worship, that the other areas of the south, the, the other, the other, I guess, two of the other four corners have not been dedicated. We do not have the appropriate land or the adequate land that is required to put the signalization in the ultimate location. It would, and, and also because of the fact that signals, signals are typically covered by DCC program, it will not be necessarily concurrent with this application, but rather.
Okay, well, I find that very concerning because of the fact there's a school in the area and there will be a lot of traffic going in and out of, as Counselor Woodward has described, with a strip mall there. And I think that signalization should be occurring as part of this project. And if maybe they can put a, a Development Works Agreement in place where they get refunded by the other corners, but that signalization has to occur concurrently. So I would support sending it back. I'm also concerned that there are sixty-one significant trees on this property and none of them are going to be retained. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I, I, I share some of the same concerns about this project all being four single-story commercial buildings in that area. It's close to the Willoughby Town Center, which of course has second levels on their building. Some of it is residential, some of it is second floor, maybe office space and some of those things. It, it does seem like we could make better use of the, of that land there, whether it's a two-story kind of structure with some offices and so on or whether it's a, a mixed, a mixed use area with residential. But I do think that there could be a better plan for that area where it's located. So I'm supportive of sending it back at this stage as well.
Thank you. Counselor Woodward?
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. I'm happy to amend it or not amend it, but work with you on the specific wording with staff and what you think will be helpful. But the intent is to, to move and refer this back to staff to make it a mixed-use development, working with the proponent to do so in conjunction with staff recommendations.
I'll second.
I think all along those lines.
Second by Counselor Richter.
Oh, but I'll second it if it includes signalization being investigated as well.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Richter, I would ask that you make that as a separate amendment or a separate motion.
Okay, then I won't second your motion.
Okay, is there a second or Counselor Whitmarsh seconds? Thank you. I just have a question for staff on this. So the, in the designation for this area on the neighborhood plan, is it designated for mixed or other levels, two-story, three-story, mixed commercial? Or is it, what's the designation? If I can get that, maybe Mr. Safi.
Yes, your worship, it is designated for, for neighborhood commercial. Not a mixed use, but rather neighborhood commercial. I do have the slides if you wish me to, to share those with council.
Sure, so neighborhood commercial, which could be retail on the bottom, offices, like was mentioned by Counselor Whitmarsh, offices on the second floor, third floor, but not residential, is that correct?
That's correct, your worship. This is the, this is the slide that shows the subject site and the designation currently in the Yorkton Plan as being neighborhood commercial. And what I understand the council contemplating right now is converting that or at least having discussions with the proponent to bring forward an amendment concurrently to the development application that would see the designation change from neighborhood commercial to mixed use.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure, all right. Go ahead.
I'm trying to unshare the screen here. There we go, thank you. Yeah, so I want to clarify too. I actually support signalization at that corner being concurrent with expanding that development. So I just, concerns I think the majority of council would support this and not support that. So I would ask that maybe they be divided, but I certainly support the, the effort to signalize that intersection as long overdue. I think for me, I think his logic is pretty simple. I, I'd like to send this back to just make it better. I find it to be on the verge of absurd to be constructing a single-story auto-oriented strip mall in the, in the center of Willoughby that this is, down the street from Willoughby Town Center on one side and then West is New Development on the other. So I, I find that to be just absurd. Again, I'll state it, a single-story strip mall with a parking lot. Certainly, we can be doing better than that in 2020. So I'd like to, to support. I hopefully there's a majority to send this back and, and make it better mixed-use development in the heart of Willoughby. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ferguson?
I think we all, thank you very much. I think we always have the opportunity to, to actually look at things accordingly. I, I read the report as well and, you know, it's a neighborhood commercial. I don't see where you would have a mixed use, which would mean commercial on the bottom and I guess residential on top. I don't know if that's within the plan, as Mr. Safi has said. Also, the applicant has gone through the process of meeting with our staff, putting together proposal, making sure they went through all the necessary steps and necessary zoning requirements. I, having said that, perhaps the applicant maybe need to appear before council and explain to council why they're following our official community plan and perhaps why they should make changes to our official community plan. And it's what council wants. So, I mean, I don't have a problem as far as the traffic light thing. Those are things that have to be determined by both staff and the applicant when they come before council. So I, I don't have any problem moving forward with awaiting, see, but I think the applicant should be, at least be given the fairness of appearing before council or either by letter or otherwise explaining what they're doing.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, is it a question true? We've tried to get signalization on other areas, especially in Fort Langley, and we've had no, no, no luck. And cat, is it a provincial thing? Are we even legally allowed to ask for signalization? It'd be nice to. The, the other question is, maybe like for it to be, and I'm not trying to be cheeky, Counselor Woodwards, but to be, it to be, I forget the word you used, single. Is there a reason it's on, it's on, just about on two, two oh fourth? Is there a reason that they've done that, that way? It's, it's, yeah, okay, I just, I descended back and say, well, we think is observed, that's maybe it. I, I just wonder if, if I'm concerned that there's something about form, character that we should be looking at. Okay, so I guess my question is, are we allowed? Like, I think, I think you build on your street, maybe you should be able, you should have to pay for signage. But I'm just wondering, I don't know, I looked at it and I didn't, nothing came out to me. But mind you, I'm maybe not so experienced with developing. So I, do you have just maybe some words? If it's legal or not, we're allowed to do that?
So it is, council does have the ability to refer this back to the proponent to perhaps take another look at their design. And the proponent has the opportunity to say, no, we're, we're happy with this under the present designation. It complies and, and they can resubmit it and then council can make a decision or they can make some changes. We, but we do have the right to send it back. And then as far as signalization, we do have the right to put that in, but I think it was explained that we don't have the land on all, all sides, certainly. That'll happen, but again, that's, council could, but that is, they wish.
Yeah, okay, so you don't, we don't even have to get a legal opinion there. Yeah, okay, okay, just my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship.
A referral?
Okay, I, I have to say, I apologize, I was disconnected for quite some time. And so I, I, I'm sort of out of the loop as to what was being discussed with respect to signalization. The only thing that I am aware of is I entered when Counselor Woodward was talking about one of his favorite topics, which is mixed development, which I'm very much in favor of. And I, and I did wonder, I'm not sure that I'm leaning towards sending it back, but the rationale for making this area specifically only single-story buildings. But if, if I could just ask one specific question, there was, there were questions raised at the public informational meeting about putting in a roundabout in that area. Is that something through, your worship, to Mr. Safi that was considered? Would that be an option for that area?
Mr. Safi?
Yes, your worship, it has, it has been considered, but based on the volume of traffic on, on the two streets and based on the patterns established in the area, it is not something that, that staff recommends or would like to proceed with. The signalization has been anticipated and is actually in the DCC program. So with that in mind, staff does not recommend proceeding with a roundabout, but rather maintain the, the order of hierarchy and go with signalization as opposed to roundabout, which, which can be seen further, further up the corridor.
Oh, so thank you. And further to that then, could we prioritize that as an intersection to be done as soon as possible in terms of how we do the hierarchy of what's needed?
Yes, your worship, the only, the only consideration, as referenced earlier and, and, and for you to reiterate that, is, is the ability to install a signal at its ultimate location, which we currently don't have. So if directive of council to proceed with signalization concurrent with the development and we don't have the consent of the other properties on the south corner, on the southeast and the southwest corners, then some kind of interim arrangement would have to be, would have to be devised and, and prepared and planned such that the signalization can occur without the ultimate property in, in place. And then at some point that the, the other corners are developed, then that has to change and, and the ultimate system put in place, which kind of adds some, some costs.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to add that, I just want to respond a little bit to some of the comments. I, I wanted to confirm, Mr. Mayor, procedurally, that if this is referred back, that we can, we can still do signalization as a separate motion? Or would you like to cross that to the referral?
That'd be a separate motion.
Okay, I just want to confirm that a separate motion because I'll support that and second that. I think that for me, I'm, I think we also, along the lines, we, you know, we need to start to signal as a council that you can't assume that you can proceed with low-quality development just because it's part of the plan. I think it's so obvious that this, this development is probably one of the worst that we've seen in a long, long time. But I can remember many years that I've been watching council. I can't remember something as bad as this in this particular location. So I don't personally care that it's in the neighborhood plan, it's bad development. And I think we need to start sending the message that we are expecting better and good development. We're expecting walkable development in an area that we're trying to reduce dependence on autos. And we're trying to create a more pedestrian-friendly neighborhood people would care about. And people don't care about parking lots. And, and why are we doing an auto-oriented development a few blocks away from a pedestrian-oriented or a more, you know, not particularly great either, but a more pedestrian-oriented development of Willoughby Town Center? This should be an add-on and, and a thing that can exist on its own. And mixed use would make this, this superb development. I want to highlight for council's information, I didn't specify the minimum debt, I mean, minimum mixed use that would occur. I didn't specify or ask for any specificity around height or any expectations around that. I think it would be great to have our staff work with the proponent to look at some alternatives to make it a mixed-use development and see if there's some way to do that without getting too specific and hear from them. I'm pretty sure I know what they're doing. They're, they're making more money with a less quality, lower quality poor development. I don't need to hear from them on, on defending this particular design. We need to hear about a better design, thanks.
Yep, Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I just want to say I support mixed use, as Counselor Arneson has said, and also Counselor Woodward. This is the way of the future and certainly if we want to build neighborhoods that people feel safe in and enjoy walking in, we've got to go down this road. So I will support this particular referral. And I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor, that I'm asking if I could please put a follow-up motion after this one on looking at the signalization in that intersection. We approved the war cap policy today. There's no reason why we can't start with that war cap, using that war cap policy at that particular intersection for the properties that aren't involved. There, there must be something we can do, but pedestrian safety is going to have to be a priority because of the proximity of the school. And I'm thinking that at minimum, there's got to be a four-way stop there, a minimum, if we're not going to put a light in. And I'm thinking we should just move forward and get the light in or a roundabout. I, I like roundabouts too, as does Counselor Long. He's convinced me about that over the years. So I would be putting forward a motion after this one, if that's okay.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Kuntz? And if Counselor Woodward and Counselor Richter could put your hand down, who would have had Counselor Kuntz? You're muted, you're muted. There you go.
So, yeah, I, I hear Counselor Woodward is saying about mixed use. But I know we talked a lot about this in our development process, procedure and the frustration that developers have about, you know, there's a neighborhood plan and we're following the neighborhood plan or, you know, the neighborhood plan doesn't, you know, make any sense. So at what point do we maybe update the neighborhood plan? So, or if there's other plans or, you know, is, is that a conversation for, you know, another time? You know, I just want to, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Yes, I, I did want to, we're doing this actually a good discussion because it does, it does raise a number of questions that I had asked a while ago. What if I made through, through the chair, the staff, what is the maximum allowable density on that, on those properties that we're looking at?
Mr. Safi?
Your worship, currently, it's, it's a commercial, neighborhood commercial. So it really depends on what council would like to see.
But they, they could, how many stories they go on that particular site?
They, they can build a neighborhood commercial up to two stories if they wish, if they wanted to.
They, they can't go any more than that?
Not with a commercial, neighborhood commercial, you can go up to two stories, but no more than that. And the mixed use would allow them to actually have, as the name suggests, a mix of residential as well as commercial. So currently, it's limited to commercial. Because of the neighborhood type of commercial, then that limits it to up to two stories and no more.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking a planning question and things that is being discussed, I was wondering if you want a mixed use. I mean, mixed use are interesting. They're, they're, they're a challenge to folks that do it. But they, where they work, they work very well. Is if they could have an opportunity, I don't know, I'm just asking questions. Do you have your commercial on the, on the main floor? And then you have two or three stories of residential for mixed use? So I, that's not in the plan, I understand? Mr. Safi?
I'm sorry, what is on the plan, the mixed use?
Yeah, well, no, my question was if you're going, it's mixed use, you know, it can be a challenge. But also if mixed use was allowed an opportunity to improve the siding, improve the, the development and make it better for everyone and also be able to afford some of the infrastructure, you would be able to have your commercial on the bottom and then two or three stories of residential?
Certainly, it's possible, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering, okay, thank you.
I don't see any further discussion on the referral, so I will now call a question. All those in favor? The referral?
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Who's opposed? Any opposed? Okay, is Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Long appears to be opposed to.
Yeah, I'd prefer if you're opposed, if you can say your name because I can't see everybody the way my screen's set up, so.
I definitely want to note that Counselor Long is opposed.
No, it's, it's, it, Counselor Woodward, I'd ask that you keep your comments after I've called the question to yourself. And Counselor Long is opposed, we always read that out, thank you. And so now Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to move a referral to staff of signalization or roundabout implemented at this intersection as part of running concurrently with this application and that the war cap policy be used if applicable.
Second.
Let's move second.
Talk to my Counsel David. So we have motion on the floor and a discussion. Counsel Richter, you speak to it?
Uh, yes, I, I just think we can't proceed with anything at this intersection until we've made that intersection safe for the pedestrians. Uh, the, the children, the schoolchildren that are in the area that will be using that intersection, that is a heavily trafficked route. And I think now that we've got a, a war cap policy in place, now's the time to put the pedal to the metal. Let's get it operational.
Counselor Davis?
Pedal to the metal. Uh, that's not what you want to do and you want a roundabout there.
Yeah, that's true.
Any, anyhow, I, okay, I would be concerned about maybe um, Ramin, that's an artillery, that's a pretty big road. It's got four lanes divided. It's got uh um, our, our uh, to the mover. By adding roundabout in there, are we confusing it? Like maybe a roundabout, maybe not be able to be put in there because there's some sort of legal thing that we have to be able to uh, you know, because that's going to be a, a pretty busy road to go uh west. So I'm going to vote for it, but I just, I'm just wondering if, if, if that by adding that in is going to maybe uh uh bugger it up somehow.
Well, i- if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, the intent of the motion was to improve the safety of that intersection.
Okay, okay.
A roundabout is one option. It may not be the best option. I think this is where we need staff uh feedback on.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I also mentioned the four-way stop, but I don't think that's going to be good enough there.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, please, let me clear. If concepts being presented here. So first of all, you're referring some safety issues to the intersection to staff. No one would argue with that, or that Counsel Woodward, but this, so this part here, we just had a discussion about war cap.
Shit, I can't hear Bob.
Okay, yeah.
Bob, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I've, I've got that. Um, Counsel Long, your um mic's a little bit difficult again, so.
Why is that? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
David?
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you talk. Yeah, now I can. You're on and off.
Yes, because, because your mic is still on.
Oh, should I shut mine off?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Okay, Counsel Long?
Right, so the idea of refer, I, I believe that this motion is to refer some of the safety issues from that intersection to staff and, and, and that would be okay. But the second part of the motion, if you're, if you're accepting both of them, says to apply war cap to it, whereas we just discovered a war cap thing is going so I don't understand how we can go back again and change things. It seems that we set things up and then we want to change them on.
The, the motion is if applicable, so uh that would be determined by, by staff. So if it's not applicable, based on the uh policy and, and the motion that we made, it wouldn't apply. Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, that's the main point. If it's applicable, perhaps staff can give us some options uh about uh the feasibility, standards, uh distances from one light to another and uh arterial road and all those kind of things. So we've got some things to study and uh make decisions, some options. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arnison?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, sorry, I'm delayed. Um, eh, thank you. Uh, I, I really support this motion. I think it's drafted in a broad kind of way to look at options, either roundabout or some kind of intersection signalization. Um, I, I just wanted, I'm not sure if it needs to be an amendment, but I would appreciate it if staff would look at some of the leading edge opportunities to provide safe passage, one of which is pedestrian leading crosswalks. That means that when the light is signalized, which is further down the road, that the person is actually out into the intersection before cars are allowed to make a turn. And that's uh very important, especially with people of small stature or, or children. Because it's very difficult sometimes to see when somebody's coming off the curb and a person is trying to quickly make a turn. So it allows that individual to be out more or less within the sightlines of any driver prior to them being able to advance. So I just wanted to put that forward as, as a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Woodward?
No, oh, there we go. Sorry, I just wanted to have the motion read back to be absolutely clear. Please.
Yeah, Ms. Bauer?
Um, the motion was to refer to staff to uh to look into signalization or roundabout at the intersection with the potential use of work happy applicable. And that the, it'd be done concurrently as development.
Yeah, so concurrently is the key, but it's also roundabout or signalization depending.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just clarify that. So it's an or uh based upon staff recommendations and what makes sense there. Uh, given that it's an arterial corridor. So I just wanted to clarify that and again, I support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification and put possible use of war cap in that as well, right?
Yes, it is.
It is in there. She did read that off. Yeah, okay, thank you. I see no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None opposed? Okay, thank you. Carries. And so now we move on to G is by law's first, second, third, and final adoption. Uh, G1, as the policy has been um deferred till the next meeting, I would suggest that we have a do we need a motion to defer this too? It's on the agenda? We just uh?
Your worship, I think it was deferred as part of the report. That's the way we interpreted it.
Okay, so staff interpret the one motion to defer all of these. So we can skip over G1. That's all.
So it's, it's deferred, Mr. Mayor, for sure?
Yes, because they have voted on it. Uh, it'll come back next, next meeting with the uh policy. Or the, like, yeah, the, the report, I should say. Okay, uh, by law, so consideration of third reading, H1 is um official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 120195, development permit application numbers 100105 and 1001086. And development variance permit application 120121, uh, by law 5559, 5560, 5561. Could I have a motion, please?
A move.
And Counsel Davis seconds. Discussion Counsel Richter on H1?
Yeah, the, the issue of Pocket Park keeps coming up over and over again. Has that been addressed in this?
Mr. Seifi?
Yes, your worship, it has. It's a condition of this development proceeding uh to final reading, to obtain final reading. It must be addressed prior to final reading.
Pr- prior to final, so it has been taken care of. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, see no further discussion. I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, Counsel Arnison opposed and Counsel Richter opposed. And so it carries 72. Thank you. And so we move on to H2. This is rezoning application number 100, zero, sorry, 100609, Blitz Manufacturing, by law 5606. Uh, could I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz in the secondary? Have a second?
Moved.
Uh, sorry, uh, Counsel Whitmer seconds. Uh, Counsel Richter, discussion?
Oh, no, I, I forgot to take my hand down. Sorry.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, it carries unanimously. Uh, we move on to the bylaws for consideration of third and for final adoption. This is rezoning application number 100620. Uh, by law number 5611, and it's uh there's no development permit on this. Nope. So a motion, please?
A move.
Counsel Ferguson, secondary. Counsel Davis, discussion. Counsel Richter?
Uh, yes, we had a um, a, a letter come to council today with uh regards to some safety issues around this, and I'm wondering, oh, I guess we can't really take that.
Post.
Can't take it into consideration, can we?
It's post um public hearing.
It's post-public hearing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward? Nope. Okay, I will call the question. All those in favor for I1, or I call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter opposed. Anybody else? Okay, it's 72, so Counsel Woodward, Richter opposed, carries. And correspondence, uh, let's just go down the receipt. There's um two, three items for receipt. Can I have a motion to receive all three?
A move.
Counsel Davis, secondary?
Yep.
Is there a sec- secondary? For receipt? Any second? Counsel Arnison, seconds?
Yeah.
Discussion receipt. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Carries unanimously. Uh, looking through it, uh, the taxi amendment proposal, we could just receive it. We could refer with or without comment. Received is sufficient, uh, if anybody wishes to raise that.
Move the receipt.
It's been moved, so it's been received already. So the only thing is if we wish to do anything, that would be an opportunity, but looks like no one wants to. Received is sufficient. And um, and so there's no action on K3. Uh, K2 is a suggestion, but it's just to endorse a letter if you wish, but see no interest in that. So we'll move on to the mayor report. There it is. So good evening, everyone, as we are conducting our second Zoom council meeting. Hopefully it's uh working smoother than the first time. We've worked a lot of kinks out of this system, and I think by now a lot of people have had experience on Zoom meetings, whether it's uh just getting together with your family or with your friends uh through Zoom. It's, it seems to be working quite well. So the community Arbor Day dedication trees have been planted at Williams Park, and I've visited the site and the trees look beautiful. It's a great job by our staff, and I'd like to thank our staff for doing that. We hope that friends and families and their public will visit the park, see the trees while practicing physical distancing. Tree dedication signs are fixed nearby to help locate the trees. On Sunday, May 3rd, I was fortunate enough to go on a fire department ride-along with IAFF 4550 members, Gareth Lockhart and Dan Rayton, uh, where we wish some of our young Fort Langley residents a very happy birthday. They're celebrating by parking the fire truck outside the residence, switching on the fire engine lights and sounding the sirens and air horn. And uh, the birthday folks got their picture taken with the fire truck and we're quite excited to see it there. I think one was three and one was turning five, so it was pretty, pretty neat. Uh, this is a time when grade 12 students would normally be celebrating their graduation with ceremonies and parties. But of course, things are different this year because of COVID. We're very proud of our Langley grads, and on behalf of council, we want to wish the graduating class of 2020 all the best with their future goals and aspirations. On April 23rd, it was announced that due to the COVID situation, the Canadian Track and Field Championships and World Championship Trials have been put back a year. They will now be hosted by the Township of Langley with the Langley Mustangs Track and Field Club in 2022 and 2023. Not only will this be a unique opportunity to see elite athletes try out for a chance to compete on the world stage, the second year of trials corresponds with the township's 150th anniversary. Sports have played an important role throughout our community's history, and this will be another wonderful way to celebrate our milestone in 2023. The 58th Annual Langley Walk is now taking place until May 31st. For township and city residents, we encourage you to walk the five kilometers at home, on a treadmill, around your community like and like every year, you can still receive your commemorative badge by email, emailing events@langleycity.ca. So we're asking that you do it uh with uh members of your household or alone, uh, or maintaining your distancing. And certainly if you, when you walk across the virtual finish line, send the pictures to uh that email, events@langleycity.ca, we'll be happy to post them. The annual May Day Parade will be a bit different this year. It's going to go virtual. On Monday, May 18th, at 11:00 AM, residents can celebrate the 98th event by watching a slideshow of past parades from home on the Langley Centennial Museum website at museum.tol.ca. That's museum.tol.ca. And uh ask everyone to enjoy uh the virtual parade. Uh, the Metro Vancouver COVID-19 Response Task Force met on Wednesday, May 6th, and reviewed the tax decrease by local governments and where we may find direct support from provincial government, and that was discussed earlier in this meeting. We've certainly been uh looking for support from municipalities and, and uh our residents and our businesses, and that work is ongoing. And we're now starting to transition into uh how do we see ourselves through and, and recover? And uh the municipalities will want to work together to uh to be, to be together on how we open up our facilities and uh one not going ahead of the other. So we're working hard with each other and our staff are working hard with each other. We also heard from Premier John Horrigan about the plan for turning the dial with respect to reducing restrictions. I want to encourage everyone to continue social distancing and washing your hands often. For recent updates and phases of restarting the province, visit COVID-19 at T O, sorry, you could visit the tol.ca website. And if you have, don't get your uh questions answered, you can email covid19@tol.ca. So that's my report for this week. Thank you. Uh, Counsel Richter?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to report to council at the last Metro Vancouver meeting. The uh borrowing that we had requested that needed to get approval from Metro was approved unanimously. The borrowing will not be temporary, but will be uh, uh, a special um issue uh in June of this year, so we won't have to wait until fall to uh obtain the money. So just wanted to let council know.
I think it's a five-year bond. Is that correct, Mr. Back? And they changed it just with the the way the markets are right now. It's a good opportunity for MFA to go out to the markets.
Um, somewhat, your worship. It's, it's a bit more complicated. They call it the reset period, so effectively it becomes a five-year bond. It's actually a longer bond with the reset period. We have an advisor, the rate is 1.5%, so that's I think the lowest in recent history.
Yeah.
And I would just wanted to thank uh council members for getting um back to me on the question that I had raised when I saw it on the agenda. I appreciate your feedback and support.
Thank you. Okay, other business. Uh, so uh COVID-19 updates. Uh, so Mr. Back? There's a short presentation?
Uh, your worship, we could do that, or given the hour, I've circulated a recent communication, just emailed all of council, the update about what's taking place. If we were to summarize it greatly, it looks like the phase two process is beginning to get underway. However, are there have been a few reservations? For example, the city of Vancouver will be closing its beaches and parking lots after the weekend. And it looks like there's going to be the allowance or permissible gathering of up to six people uh after the May long weekend, for seven select businesses. And Langley, we anticipate will be following the same process, uh, perhaps a little bit later as we get more up to speed. But uh if you'd like more of the fire chief to come online, or we could continue with the meeting.
Uh, fair enough. I know with the, um, certainly uh that each community has to look at their own community and, and, and address how they're going to start reopening. I know City of Vancouver may have different issues with their beaches that we haven't seen here, but certainly uh this is evolving, and I think we'll, each community will respond. Even though we want to work together, but we have to respond to our own community needs. Uh, so uh Chief Gamble, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I, I think uh Mark covered everything that I was going to cover. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from uh staff, uh, council, I should say? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the dog-off-leash parks are open again, and that's very good news.
Yeah, that's right. So a- as we stated, we're slowly opening things up. People, I think, are becoming very used to the distancing and, and uh washing hands and and uh so we were able to open these things up, and hopefully they can stay open, uh, just like the beaches. If people aren't distancing, then we'd have to take another look at it, but hopefully uh this will stay open. Okay, so we've received the update. Um, now Counsel Richter, I know uh you want an update on the COVID-19 environment. Does it just, did this update uh satisfy your request?
Uh, yes, no, I think that um basically the information I was looking for has been covered very effectively in uh in E5. Uh, the only outstanding item I might request is if council could receive an update as soon as possible on um impact on land values uh as a result of uh COVID. Um, yeah, so as soon as they get information, if there's changes up or down, that they let us know.
Okay, that'd be good. That'd be good to know. I know just talking to realtors that things have slowed a bit, but not seeing too much decrease in uh in prices of houses. And actually, I know someone who, or know of someone who put the house to market, sold two days later for a hundred fifty thousand dollars more than they listed it. So things are still moving, but it's um, you know, it'd be interesting to see what transpires over the next uh few weeks and months. Okay, uh, we'll move on to um processing resident issues in the COVID-19. Uh, I think Counsel Long had asked a little bit of discussion on that. I, I just want to comment, I think the uh ELC has done an excellent job in responding to residents in uh in trying to ha- make, ensure that we have um a very consistent message that goes out. And uh, but Counsel Long, I'd like you to, if you want to add anything.
Subject that I wanted, I, I should have maybe said something when we approved the agenda, because there's no way that I wanted to discuss the processing of, of residents' requests. It was simply this idea of the road closure.
Yeah, okay.
Other communities are embarking on those types of initiatives. So that was simply all, as you, I'm sure you saw, seen some emails have been coming back and forth with some confusion. All I wanted to do was to uh discuss this resident's idea about closing streets.
Okay.
It's not an E, the issue in my opinion, but now that we've had the delegation, um, I have no problem with how we're handling uh concerns of the residents. This specific idea of closing a street piqued my interest, and I thought we should have a discussion. I, I'm not sure where council wants to go on this.
We could do that now, and actually it would be good for, I mean, I know I discussed that um issue as the delegation came. I know it's uh, we're in other business now, and so maybe this is the place we can discuss it. Uh, Mr. Seifi? I know it's an arterial road. We did discuss how we could open it, but now that we see, from my point of view, we're starting to see the economy start to open up. British Columbia wants to open up again. Um, I'm not sure if this is something we want to proceed with, but Mr. Seifi, maybe you can provide some background on. Um, I'm not sure if this is something we want to proceed with, but Mister Seffy, maybe you can provide some background on on the delegation and dovetail into what Council Long had actually wanted to put on the agenda at this time. Mister Seffy?
I apologize, your worship, I was multitasking. Could you just uh?
So regarding the um arterial road or the two sixteenth and eighty eighth Avenue um delegation request that we had earlier, I believe that was uh Council Long's intent for um O two.
Okay.
More to discuss that. Uh, so just, I I know we looked at this arterial road and my comment is that now we're starting to open up the economy. And uh so.
Thank you, worship. That's that's certainly one consideration, the the fact that the economy is opening up. Uh, the other points that council needs to bear in mind uh as part of their deliberation and discussion and and contemplation are the facts that we don't have uh total jurisdiction over uh all of our arterial roads in that we are required by law, uh by provincial legislation, to obtain the approval of uh Translink essentially through the South Coast, South Coast Transportation Act uh to obtain their approval if we are impacting, impeding uh the flow of of uh truck traffic uh on certain routes, uh and that includes two sixteenth and eighty eighth Avenue. Now, because of the volume of traffic on eighty eighth Avenue, staff, regardless of the need for approval, does not have a recommendation or actually strongly urges council to not direct staff to to uh make any changes to eighty eighth Avenue. If council wishes to to consider something, perhaps a referral to staff to consider what may be possible on two sixteenth. Uh, again, with uncertainties around COVID and and uh and all of that, it may be a moot point. But if if council so chooses, a referral to staff may be appropriate to consider something on on two sixteenth.
Thank you. Uh, Council Long, did you still wish to speak to that?
Well, didn't want to be specific on any streets. I just think the concept was worth discussing. So uh I I think I'll just leave it out there. We've had a delegation and I understand staff's concern. I've seen the memo, which I did forward to uh to Ms. Jordan. Um, but I mean, would there be some other streets somewhere that could be considered? I'll just leave it out there and I and I waste any more time on it.
Thanks. I just want to add that uh I've been watching uh two forty eighth street uh where this township has really been developing the cycling infrastructure, so there is there there is work being done to improve the cycling infrastructure. Uh, whether it's uh in our plans that we have now to uh put more cycling pathways through. Uh, that's happening now, but it might not be in every street that everybody wants and in the location that they want. But certainly uh blocking off lanes on arterial roads could pose some challenges. Uh, Council Richter?
Uh, yes, it strikes me that this is a a major policy initiative, particularly in light of the uh memorandum that staff have uh sent to council in terms of the costs. We know we're in a restricted um revenue uh period right now. And uh to have staff out there putting barricades up on arterial roads in the morning and then taking them down at night. Um, I I believe this is a policy decision. So I would like to move a referral of this whole topic matter uh to the next meeting of the council. Um, it's not council priorities anymore, it's council policy committee.
Okay, I I'll accept that. I just, uh, Council Arneson is next to speak. I just want to hear from her and then we'll go to the referral. Council Arneson, did you want to wait or or do you want to?
Yes, no, it's okay. Thank you, worship. I I think um what I'm about to say is likely to augment what Counselor Richter said with the proviso that um I I I'm thinking that without a crystal ball, we're attempting to try and figure out potentially what the timeline is relative to what implications there would be for policy with respect to temporarily closing down some roads. So just to create some context, my initial impression of the ask from the local group was not necessarily that it had to be those specific roadways, but was more around the fact that could we look at opportunities for underutilized roadways during the COVID distancing protocols and find some way to connect trails, communities and other uh amenities to each other? So I was of the opinion that if we refer this to staff, that they could look at beyond what was specifically being requested on two sixteenth and eighty eighth, which I personally don't uh see as being um the best options at this point. But to look at, um, as I said, other opportunities, uh I'm just not quite sure whether or not um it would take too long to try and figure out from a another meeting point of view. Uh, you know, most other communities are doing this rather expeditiously, I have to say. Every time I go out, there's more and more cyclists, and I do take to heart the fact that the mayor has pointed out that on two forty eight, there's road, you know, infrastructure, people cycling around, but it doesn't really address the need to be able to circulate in your local community and get some exercise. And it does appear to me that many times, based on the current infrastructure that we have, it can be challenging. So either people are on a sidewalk and they're competing with others on walking, or else they're, you know, trying to jostle around too close to each other while they're physically um trying to make their way to our community. So I guess to some degree, I would be supportive of looking at this as um enduring policy, but I'm still in favor of at least looking at temporary options to include what could be considered in phase two, because I recognize the warmer weather is coming, people are wanting to get out, they're gonna do it anyways. I think it it's our opportunity to provide a safe place for people uh to cycle. And I do find it's a it's a global phenomenon at this point, so I'll just leave it there for now.
Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to uh confirm that this committee is actually gonna meet um and what the schedule would be. So if we send it there, what would be the the timeline and which staff meeting would be called or we do we have a mechanism to discuss the item currently?
Probably in fall. Mister Backen's on.
So if it's movers intent, I'm I'm fine with it. Just wanted to clarify the movers intent and reverse the timeline.
Okay, thank you. So, Council Richter, you're on.
Yeah, um, no, we we had the the last session with the Dr. McIntosh where we decided that rather than send staff down a path of developing policies, we needed to have a discussion around what policy specifically that we want uh in order to streamline the workload that we're putting on staff. And given that our staff resources are stretched significantly right now because of the COVID, I believe this is a policy, a council policy matter. And um I believe it's going to need some research into what other communities are doing. And I need, we have, and I believe we need to do it right, not just rush into something. So that's my intent. It, this needs to go before the policy committee. The policy committee then has to make a decision as to whether or not it wants to proceed with developing a policy around this. And if it wants a policy, what the parameters of that policy should be. So uh if we're not gonna have, I mean, the mayor can call a special meeting whenever he wants to. Uh, there's nothing preventing him. We've got four weeks now without a council meeting. There's nothing preventing him from calling a a policy committee meeting in the next four weeks, and we can discuss it then, or we can hold off until the fall. But um just to jump into this without having looked at all the ramifications is uh not necessarily a wise move on my part, in my opinion, or on our part, in my opinion.
Did you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I'm making that motion.
Okay, is there a second or? Is there a second or? Council Davis seconds, uh Council Lo- Council Long, I think I already had, your hand is still up, that's from before.
Yeah, because I've.
Okay. Okay.
Well, now we have a motion, but I mean, I don't see it as a policy issue at all. This is something, a reaction to the current situation. And if we wait for several months, the situation is changing by the hour. Uh, I certainly agree with the comments that have all been made, that eighty eighth may not be a good choice, even two sixteenth may not be. I don't know what street would be a good choice or if there is even a good choice to be made. Um, I was willing just to let it go, but I can't see referring it, because by the time we we talk about it, you know, things will have changed yet again. I I I was hoping that uh out of my just putting it on discussion on the agenda, someone might say, hey, why don't you close Glover Road? In Fort Langley for, you know, for a couple hours every Sunday, so people can walk around there. I I don't have any suggestions, but I don't see this as a policy, because I don't think this is something that we're gonna do on a regular basis. It was a suggestion for something to do under these current circumstances, which hopefully won't last too much longer. I mean, there there is some reality to that, of course. Um, so if if there isn't a a clear answer uh at the moment, I I just assume leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council Richter? Then I'll call a question.
Okay, um, I I I think it is a policy matter because it's utilizing staff resources on an initiative. And if we think for one minute that uh this group is gonna go away after COVID is relaxed and hopefully gone, which may never happen, uh I think we're we're mistaken. I think this is going to be a push from this group for many years coming forward to get temporary closures in on the weekends or whatever, which means that we have to look at this policy very carefully. And as I said earlier, we don't have to wait till the fall to have a policy discussion around this. We could certainly here to call a special meeting over the next month or over the summer sometime uh just for the purposes of uh of looking at this uh policy matter. So it's not something that can, that needs to be put off indefinitely. It can be dealt with quite quickly.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll call a question, all those in favor?
Oh, no, no, I have a question. I was, I had my hand up, Council Ferguson.
Council Ferguson, missed that.
Yeah, I had my hand up. So, yeah, I just wanted to reread. Can you get somebody to read the motion? And I just was trying to understand where we're at with and, you know, what's gonna happen if the motion passes or doesn't pass. Thank you.
This is just to uh refer to the uh, refer this to the uh council process committee uh to have a more fulsome discussion, and I I would think that would include cycling uh infrastructure and also the uh ability to do special areas at special times. But maybe you could read the motion as it's as it is, Miss Bauer. That pretty much captured it? Oh, she's nodding her head, I captured it. Look at that.
Okay, so make a long story short, we, you, you, the mayor may or may or staff as well, may or may not call a meeting depending on uh how much meat and potatoes they have in this motion.
That's right. Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Council Long opposed, anybody else? Carries? Uh, move on to Q to O four. I I want to apologize, I didn't put in what QTA stands for. It's the Canadian Urban Transit Association. And it's an organization that represents transit authorities uh right across Canada. Uh, this is something that they've been working on with provincial, with the federal government uh in uh getting some support. So I will move it and then I'll I'll provide some more background and discussion, so I'll move it if and if there's a second. Council Davis seconds it. Uh, so I'll just speak to it briefly, uh because a lot of this is a fast-moving area. The province and Translink came to an agreement uh late last week where uh Translink had already had to make some decisions to cut routes and reduce, reduce routes and and lay and and implement layoffs. By May eighteenth, the province is doing its turning the dial and wanting to restart the economy. Uh, came to realization that uh by reducing transit and and increasing the, you know, opportunities to uh for the economy are in opposition to each other. So a lot of work was done. Uh, eleventh hour, uh, the province agreed to uh to support Translink uh if they uh could postpone the uh the layoffs and the and the route cuts. And so the board approved that, and so we're moving uh with uh towards with with the province to to assist in some of the revenue loss that's happening. However, that doesn't alleviate um some of the longer-term uh problems that transit authorities have. And the province, even though transit is a provincial mandate authority, uh the province is really seeking uh assistance from the federal government and so is transit authority. So that's why this motion's on the table, is just to uh support QTA in their request. And uh this supports transit authorities across Canada and especially our own transit authority here in uh Metro Vancouver, which is uh very important for those who uh require transit to get to work and get to appointments and shopping. Right now, uh we're servicing about seventy-five thousand people a day uh who require and rely on transit. But uh the whole face of transit authorities is changing across uh Canada, across North America, probably the world. So that's why this is on on the table still.
Second.
It's been second, moved and seconded, so any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Favor.
Carries unanimously. Uh, Council Kunst, uh the tulips look beautiful. You've got some great pictures. And uh so you have a motion here to uh, I'll I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, um, so yeah, um, unfortunately, not everyone could enjoy them this year, but there were a lot of pictures taken and they were shared all across Canada and uh the Netherlands, so um um you've all read the wherewith. Uh, so I'll just, you know, make the motion that it um that they could be planted for as long as the bulbs are viable. So I don't know how long that is, but I know it's, the the bulbs have a uh a few years in them, so um. Yeah, so do you want me to read the therefore or?
No, that's that's fair enough. You moved it, second by Council Richter.
Okay.
Council Long.
Yeah, so uh I I don't think this staff were gonna dig them all up, or at least I would hope, yeah, leave them where they.
Yeah, if you're breaking up a bit.
Oh. So I I don't think that the uh there was an intent to dig them up, so this motion simply says to leave them in the ground, isn't that right? So they can.
I I don't know the, I'm not a horticulturist, but I know that most Dutch people take their bulbs out and and then replant um because they double, and then they they look a little bit shrimpy when you um, you know, sort of, yeah. You don't take them out. So I I don't know, I'm gonna leave it up to staff. They can do whatever they like if they wanna, you know, take them out or if they um wanna replant them. But um, yeah, I I I would have a maybe conversation with with uh staff about that.
Okay, well, so I would support staff looking into it. I think they just leave them in there and and they'll come back year after year. That's what's happening at my place. Okay.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Yeah, no, I'm not sure that they will last, because the mice and the moles and everything else get in and eat them. They may have to be dug up and saved. Uh, but I I just wanted to add a corollary to this, and that is that uh Margaret or Counselor Kunst had arranged to um have a uh someone who was actually uh in uh Amsterdam when the um uh liberation uh came through, and he wrote a piece that he was going to use, and it was such a moving story uh reading that. And I'm hopeful that maybe we could share his story on uh on our township website or get it into the hands of the newspaper or whatever, because it 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 really was very insightful and spoke about the experience that those people uh had when uh when Canada came through. So it was just a a a corollary that I wanted to mention.
That's a good point. Maybe uh Council Kunst, you could speak to him and see if he'd like to submit it to the newspaper and they could run a story on it, and that way we could share.
Sure, I'll I'll get permission from him. I know he was a little concerned about, he didn't have it quite polished the way he wanted it.
It's actually pretty good, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he was a school teacher, so.
Yeah. Council Davis?
Yeah, actually, I just was, uh, Council Richter, uh, I um that story about the tulips, I think, was pretty good, so um it's unfortunately, you didn't get to say it, but I think Margaret, uh Counselor uh Kunst, you just want the, whatever they do to keep your tulips looking good, whatever they do, so I I think I support that, because that actually, they do look pretty good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Uh, Council Kunst, uh, your next one is regarding a donation. You're muted. You're you're on mute, Council Kunst. There you go.
Yeah, so um having sort of worked with uh a lot of the school districts and the councillors in the past, I know that um there there were a lot of needy families before COVID, and now since um there's even more. And um I've talked to Susan Cairns, who is the executive director of the Langley School District Foundation. And um you may have gotten some of that information, over six hundred uh gift cards that they give out to families. Um, so I just thought, since some of our um festivities, festivals and things that weren't gonna happen, that maybe there would have been some leftover um community grant uh money that may be uh used for um some of our township residents um that are in need, so that's where this came from.
I have one question uh to staff before you move this. Uh, Mister Backen, is this appropriate uh place to get the funding from, or is council contingency, would that be better? It's all kind of come out of the same pot, but we'd rather see.
Your worship, either way, it could work right now. We did check the balance left on the grant fund, and there was about fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, so we'll leave it as is. Thank you. Okay, Council Kunst, you move that. Is there a second or? Uh, Council Long seconds, uh discussion, Council Ferguson? You're muted. You're muted, Council, Council.
I didn't want to say it already uh through the school district uh Rotary Club, but so we certainly donate accordingly. It's a great cause, thank you.
Thank you. Council Richter? Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Uh, yes, um, I'd like to make a small amendment to this. Um, that the money be provided, um, to aid in gift card distribution program, um, for Langley Township families. Because I know there are families in need, uh, in the township. And as this is coming from township taxpayer dollars, it should go to Langley Township families. So I would move that amendment at the end of the first, uh, therefore, at the end of the therefore paragraph.
Counselor Kunst, are you okay with that? I'll take that as a, unless there's any opposition, as unanimous consent on the, uh, amendment. Counselor Long? Counselor Long?
I'll read.
Sorry, Counselor Long, do you want it to go as a formal amendment or are you okay with it?
A friendly amendment you.
Yes, by unanimous consent unless there's someone's.
Right, so I'm not in, in favor.
Okay, so, uh, we'll ask it to be moved as an amendment. So Counselor Richter moves it.
I move it as an amendment.
And is there a seconder? Counselor, second? Counselor Woodward, uh, Counselor Long, you wish to speak to your?
Yeah, so I mean, that's very awkward to begin with. It's the school district, uh, you know, looks at the whole area and, uh, people in need in the Langley, in the Langley School District, which is what the motion started with. It's an initiative that the school, uh, District Foundation has started. We're supporting that foundation. So I don't think we should be putting conditions when we give a gift, we give a gift. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Richter?
Uh, yes, uh, except that we know from presentations on school district and also health authority information that we have areas of, uh, economic need in, in the township. Uh, Alder Grove has been cited as an area of need, uh, parts of Willoughby have been cited as an area of need. And I think it's important that if we're going to put Langley taxpayer, township taxpayer money, that it's going to Langley Township areas of need. And that would be the condition that, that I think we should have.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Yes, Counselor Kunst.
Okay, so, um, so regardless of which way this goes, I, I think, you know, with the gift cards, um, if we, if we have this amendment, um, it just frees up some of the, the gift cards for the city. So I think it's a win-win, either, whichever, whichever way we go. I know there's needs in Alder Grove, in Walnut Grove, um, Vanguard, um, so there's, there's lots of need everywhere. So, um, I'm, I'm not opposed to the amendment because I think if, if we have it, then, then it just frees up some of that, uh, extra gift cards to, for the city.
Okay, thank you. I will, um, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Long's opposed, uh, the motion carries. Okay, uh, Counselor Arneson on oh seven. Oh, the amendment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've, I've missed something. It was amendment, so I have to, uh, the, after more, call the question on the motion as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, Counsel Arneson, you're on.
Yes, uh, thank you, worship. Um, I'm just going to sort of bookend the, uh, the text of the, uh, motion to sort, makes a bit more sense. Um, where strata property owners in the township of Langley are facing insurance rates increases of between fifty and three hundred percent in twenty twenty along with rising deductibles. Or hear a terrible noise. Um, therefore be resolved that council directs staff to contact the Minister of Housing, Ms. Selena Robinson, requesting that the provincial government review its mandate to help to provide meta policy frameworks to support housing affordability with the objective of initiating a review of relevant policies and regulations in order to trigger appropriate regulatory amendments to address this unprecedented increase to strata insurance premiums.
I'll second that.
Can I just speak to the motion?
Yes, you can. And just to clarify, um, this is a, be a letter our staff would send with this motion. Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Arneson.
Yeah, um, I, I'm reasonably sure that, um, many on council, so all the colleagues have read and heard from individuals who are quite distressed at the economic implications of what's currently been happening, particularly within the last few months. So as we're aware, everybody who lives in a strata, the corporation is required to have insurance. So it's a two-fold whammy. The first is that the insurance has skyrocketed and the second is also in combination with that. The deductibles have also gone up substantially. And this is in buildings that unfortunately are oftentimes relatively new, not necessarily, but often they are. So the intent is to try and move some advocacy forward to the provincial level of government because they are in a position to be able to work with insurers to try and create some kind of policy framework so that it can be adjusted in some way. There's been a number of things that have been suggested as remedies as to how this would work. I'm not suggesting any of this at this time, but what I am suggesting is it's time to lob the ball to the province and say, we are all, as they talk about in COVID, in this together. We have many, many individuals in all demographic economic situations who are now in multifamily residences and strata buildings where they are inordinately compromised by this terrible financial duress. And obviously during a time of COVID, this is just adding more stress. So I liken this to the province when we had many years ago, the initial problem with the leaky condos, which I think we all recall, that there was a strategy that had to be drafted and working towards how we could mitigate or remedy that for the betterment of the individuals that lived in, um, in these circumstances. So they weren't financially, uh, under so much duress. So I'm hoping that council will support this because in particular, I think the more chorus of voices that we hear at this time, the province should, as we see, cooperatively start to work with, um, the insurers to try and figure out a way. It's very unfortunate, the business model for flooding and forest fires has now been visited on people who live on properties that have never had any claims. So I'm hoping that we can make a dent in the fact that the province needs to step up and try and address this problem because we have many people in the township and beyond that are really doubly stressed by this situation. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, I really appreciate Counselor Arneson, uh, bringing this to our attention. I actually talked a little bit about it, a tiny bit during the, uh, budget deliberations, deliberations of council, including and bringing it to attention of the fire chief. Uh, my brother is, um, on the executive of strata council in Surrey and, uh, it just even happened in a one-year term where their insurance, uh, they were very difficult to get it. And they have very, they've never had a claim and they had very difficult. So the province is in the insurance business that they could help out. But I know the city of Langley also has some, sent something to the province as well. This has to be addressed because there's huge concerns about folks that still are not even able to, um, get it, the particular property and insurance. Um, I know that, uh, Counsel Arneson didn't bring that to your attention, but there are some properties within the region, Mr. Mayor, that have not been able to get the insurance. So this is a, this is an ongoing challenge. So we really, really appreciate Counsel Arneson bringing our attention. And also we hope the province, who are already in the insurance business, could do something. One final thing, if you could do anything at Metro to, uh, bring it to your attention, both yourself and Counselor Richter, of how big a concern this is, we would appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Um, yeah, and I, I had a question too, because I, I don't think it's just strata owners that are being affected by increasing house, uh, house insurance premiums. Uh, I know, uh, in our case, we got hit with an increase again this year. Uh, so I'm wondering if we need to, um, uh, change the wording of the last sentence there to increase, uh, unprecedented increase to strata and other housing insurance premiums.
Um, certainly, Counsel Arneson, is that okay? We'll do the amendment unanimously. Or do you want to leave it the way it is, not to water it down?
You know, personally, I, I just look at this and, and think that the ground swell of the voices that we're hearing have really, from my perspective, and I understand that everybody's in a different situation in terms of insurance going up for different reasons. But I, I don't want to dilute the impact of the fact that it's, uh, a disproportionate amount of individuals. I'm not saying that others aren't affected, but a disproportionate amount of individuals who are in multifamily units and stratas for a variety of reasons. But often many of them are older, empty nesters, people, young families, single parents, et cetera. And they're very unable. I think their financial decision was largely predicated on the fact that they could find affordable accommodation. And I know affordability is a very relative term, but to suddenly have all of this thrust on you, I think is very unfair. So, you know, I, I think it's best from my perspective, just to, but, yeah, just to leave it as it is.
So Counselor Richter, if you wish to make an amendment, um, to that effect or just leave it as it is, that's up to you.
No, that's fine. We'll leave it as it is.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Is there any other business?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Kunst?
Um, we just received some, uh, communication from the resident who's watching about the daycare. And, um, there was no, she's, she's kind of frustrated because it sounds like she, she, she got her, her, um, letter in on time, but we, we sort of dismissed it, um, saying that, you know, we didn't get it in time. So would, would, would we be able to have a response for her or can staff communicate?
The daycare was third reading, wasn't it? Sorry. Yeah, so this was the DP, right? No, resigning. Yeah. Okay, yeah. So maybe you can explain the policy, uh, to council and, and why it's, I know it's changing policies because of this, um, way we have to do business now and we did approve a policy, but Ms. Bauer can explain it to council.
So this would be in relation to the changing of the, um, development procedure by law we recently had. So the submission received was actually, uh, a submission that could be discussed. Um, it was not a post-public hearing submission as that application did not have public, uh, did not have a public hearing. It could be, it would be, the submission was in replacement of the public hearing.
Okay, so.
So I'm speaking to this too.
Okay, yeah, I'll let you, you, uh.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if I'm there, but, um, might have a potential solution if that's possible.
Sure.
So I was gonna, have you read, if you look closely at her notification card, she was clearly given a deadline, uh, that she met. Um, and so if there's an opportunity, I would potentially hypothetically could, uh, move reconsideration of that bylaw and then we could entertain that referral motion and process it properly.
Okay, I'll.
The council would have a decision on her submission, whether it's going to get referred back or not, because I would like to make that referral.
Okay, so if, if Counselor Woodward is moving reconsideration, I'll second that.
So we just have to, I just want to clarify the, the policy.
I can't debate reconsideration, so it's not moved yet.
No, so that's right. I just have to get the policy clear. This is reconsideration in the same meeting. Can be moved by someone who voted in.
In favor, in this case.
I can't, yeah.
Yes, you can.
I can?
But you, you didn't, you weren't opposed.
Yes, I was actually.
Oh, you were. Okay, so no, you can't. We need someone who was opposed.
So please have the minutes reflect that I was opposed to that one.
No, hold, okay. I'll make, I'll double check, but we need someone who voted in favor of the meeting, in favor of the motion as it did pass.
That's right. So someone had.
Hopefully council will allow this to go ahead so we can discuss her submission and the referral motion and process it properly either way.
So, uh, those who were opposed on that motion, I'm just going to get the.
I was opposed.
Yeah.
Um, so Counselor Woodward and Counselor Richter were opposed on that motion?
Okay, so anybody else could move reconsideration?
I'll move reconsideration.
Counselor Arneson moves reconsideration. Is there a seconder?
I'll second it.
Counselor Davis seconded it. So now the, uh, motion's back on the floor, which, just for, just to help me out, where is that one again? Which?
It's item I one.
I one, okay, thanks. So go back to, to, to I one. Okay, I one is, uh, for consideration at third reading and for final adoption. It is, um, back on the table. So it needs to be moved again, Counselor, or Ms. Bauer?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I need a motion on I one? If you want to refer it somehow, we have to get this thing started. Is there?
Um, well, I think Counselor Arneson, we've moved recon, oh, so now.
We need a vote for reconsideration first.
Yes.
So we've moved, Counsel Arneson and Counselor Davis moved it for reconsideration.
Did I not call the?
Now we'll vote, nope. Then we'll call the vote on it.
It's getting late.
There's no discussion on reconsideration or no matter. There's no discussion on.
I'm just going to call the question.
No discussion on reconsideration? Or yes or no?
No, she says no. So I'm calling the question reconsideration.
Consideration, so it gives, it gives, it does give us an awful lot of time to think this thing through.
Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Ferguson, please. I'm calling the question on reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, it's back, it's, uh, carries unanimously. So, sorry, I missed a step there. So we're back to, um, the agenda, I one. I need a motion on I one.
So, um, uh, and this is to move the motion?
Just to move it and then it could be referred. So it can be discussed.
To move it to referral or move it?
Just to move it and then we can have a subsequent motion if you wish.
I will move it.
Or it can be discussed.
I'll vote, I'll, uh, make a motion to move it.
Counsel Whitmarsh moves it. Is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
Counselor Davis seconded it. So now it's on the floor. So, um, the delegation or that delegation report came forward. We could address it, uh, right now or whatever else you want to do for Counselor. So there's a lot of hands up. Is it on this motion now or is it on for other business?
My hand was up for other business.
Okay, so maybe we could just, uh, put the hands down.
Okay.
I need to make a referral.
Yeah. I just want to see who's on the speaking list. Okay, so Counsel Woodward.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on this one, yeah, I, I read that letter this morning. And, um, you know, I, I think it's, it's in the realm of, you know, where are these particular commercial units designed for daycare use? They seem to be on the verge of being too small with some, I think, pretty valid concerns about the outdoor areas and the outdoor space in conjunction with a, with a daycare use versus family care use. So I think it's appropriate to maybe bring council up to speed on the distinction between daily care and family care and have staff, uh, get back to us and refer those, that letter from, uh, from that resident to staff to get some responses on her points and, and find out, uh, whether she's stating things correctly, whether or not it is too small or on the verge of being too small and what the provisions are for meeting provincial regulations for this use. And really are these commercial units appropriate for this use rather than just updating the zoning?
Thank you, Counsel.
So move that, refer back to staff to review the resident's concerns.
Okay, it's been moved. Was there a seconder?
Yeah, second.
Second, Counsel Richter. Okay, Counsel Kunst on the referral?
Um, yeah, no, I, I think that that letter came in this morning too. So I was a little surprised when we went to talk about it, that, that the, the comment was made that it's too late. So, um, uh, yeah, so I, I, that's all I was going to say.
You're supporting referral. Okay, uh, Counsel Long?
No, I'm fine. I was going to try and move the referral as well, so apparently.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson on the referral?
Yes, I, I did want to ask a question to staff, if I may. The idea, uh, the concept of bias. And, uh, I'll ask the staff that if a, there has been a bias presented and implemented accordingly, does that, um, implement or provoke, provide a challenge to the council, if I may, through the chair?
I don't know, really can't, I don't understand the question. If there's a bias by whom, uh, this is, um.
Well, we've had, we've had the person that was opposed to the bylaw. If I, say you're a judge, Mr. Judge, I am opposed to a bylaw, but I want to bring it back.
Okay, that's, that's fair, but it was done properly.
Opposed. Now is that a bias, Mr. Judge?
No, uh, the person who mentioned that, uh, didn't move it. So we followed the procedural bylaw and it was moved and seconded by, it was moved and seconded by, uh, people who voted in favor. So, uh, that's perfectly.
So, well, no, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to determine a bias here, whether that indeed would be implemented at this point in time.
No.
I mean, I don't understand, uh, and that could, you could vote whatever way you want. It's just that I just try to determine i- if there's been a fair process presented here.
Well, uh, we followed the procedural bylaw up to this point, so now we're discussing the referral. So if you have anything to discuss in the referral, that's the motion in front of council right now.
Okay, that's.
Uh, Mr. Seffy, or, yeah, Mr. Seffy, did you want to say something?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to, uh, provide some information verbally to council. And if after that council still wishes the, uh, the report to come forward from staff, certainly we can do that. But perhaps in the interest of time and, and, uh, and effort, maybe I can just provide some, some clarification. Uh, the, the site is actually, the property is actually zoned for that same use. It is in fact a house key. It is in fact a housekeeping amendment, if you will, that the proponents are asking for. And what I mean by that is the reason why the application is in front of council is because of this anomaly in the zoning bylaw definition as it compares to, relates to the Land Titles Act, which provides for stratification of properties without local government involvement. So what has happened in this particular case is despite the property being zoned for care of up to seven children, which has to happen based on the zoning bylaw definition within the same unit. So what happened was after the zoning was granted by council, the owners went ahead and stratified the property. So now it is not in the same, within the same unit because you have a separate commercial unit that is from the residential unit. So you have two separate units that have been sold separately to different, different owners. So now no longer it complies with the, the provisions of the zoning bylaw because of the fact that the property was, was stratified without local government involvement. Because of that, they have to amend that. It doesn't affect the actual use of the building or the property in any way. It is sized appropriately. And if there are any modifications that need to happen to make sure that the provincial government issues the license, that's up to the owner to address the requirements of the provincial government with respect to Fraser Health, with respect to open spaces for, for children to play and, and have a, a safe play area with fences, et cetera. That's a subsequent stage that they have to go through regardless. But as far as our zoning bylaw requirements are concerned, we are meeting the zoning bylaw provisions.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Myself, there we go. Yeah, I'm good to get used to this process. I appreciate that input. I, I think it's fantastic when council gets a chance to provide a little bit of oversight on this. You know, especially when we're, we've got, you know, somebody cramming in seven kids into four hundred square feet. So I, I think it's great actually that even if it's a quirk in the process or a quirk in the bylaw, that we've got a chance to do some oversight here. And I think all of that can be put back in writing to us, whether or not these units are appropriate for the use. And if they require our approval, then we get a chance to do that. Thanks.
Okay, this is on the, we throw back to staff to address the concerns. Can I have a, I'm going to call the question. Counsel Kuntz, you just put your hand up. Counsel Kuntz? You're muted.
Yeah, is there currently a daycare running there right now or is this something new?
Mister Seffy?
I am not sure if the daycare is actually operational or not, your worship. But the, the requirement, as I said, of the zoning bylaw are not being made because of the fact that the unit was stratified and sold separately to a different owner. But I'll have to look into staff, we'll have to do some research to find out if a license has been granted for a daycare operation by Fraser Health or not.
So if, if we referred or deferred this, what, would it come back at the next meeting? And would that be the time, timeline?
Your worship, yes, because of the, I guess the nature of the application and, and the, it, in other words, yes, it is possible to bring it back at the next meeting.
Thank you, Counsel. And we are really short on time, so I'm going to ask you to keep your comments and questions short. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to confirm that I understood Mister Seffy that the report that we have clearly indicates that the spaces are, are zone designated for that use and that the determination of whether the space is adequate or not will be determined by Fraser Health as they apply to actually run a daycare. So we're really not going to get any different answer from staff than we have currently today.
Right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the referral. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll oppose. I froze. Counsel Whitmarsh, who else? Anybody else opposed? Counsel Ferguson? Anybody else? Okay, three opposed. It carries. And so now I'm asked for other business. We do have another meeting to go into. So if it's, let's see whose hands go up. Perhaps we can run through this quickly. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I have three items here from items distributed that I'd like to reference in the package that came to council on April thirtieth. Item number three, item number three on page three, which is a, the Township of Langley Fire Hall eight concerns. I would like to request that a copy of this report be sent to former councillors Howie, Howie Vicberg and Jordan Bateman, as well as to local four five five zero of the IAFF.
Mister Backen, can that be by direction? Yes, thank you.
Okay, the second item that I'd like to refer to is in the same package, and that's the April thirtieth package. And that's number five with regards to the collapse of the embankment going to the Salmon River. And I would like council to please be able to get an update report on this from staff as soon as possible with regards to sealing off any arterial wells or springs that have been opened up as a result of this that could potentially be draining the aquifers or the aquifer.
So, so staff are in process of preparing a report and they have a geotech, Mr. Backen's nodding his head, so that information will come to.
It'll come to us, very good. Okay. And the third item is item number sixteen in items distributed on May seventh. This is on page twenty-eight. It's about the Kids Sport Grant. And I see we're going to be putting in twenty-five hundred dollars to Kids Sport to serve two hundred children. And will those two hundred children be Township of Langley children?
Yes, Mr. Backen's saying yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Oh, I'd like to be the last one. So if there's anybody else, they should go first, your worship.
Oh, you're the last one.
Last. This is it then? All right, everybody turn their mics on. Let's see if we get this thing going. Hey, hey, it's a birthday! Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Birthday dear Fergie. Fergie. Happy birthday to Fergie.
There you go. Happy birthday, Fergie.
Thank you very much. By the way, Bob, you got the wrong chord pattern.
Oh, yeah. He's, he does put all that effort. You criticize him. Thank you very much. So with that, we're going to move into motions resolved, the special closed. So kind of a motion, please?
So move.
Second or? Have a second or? Counsel Kuntz, any hands up? No, I don't see any. All those in favor? Opposed and carried and a motion to terminate. A motion to terminate, Counsel.
Termination.
Too late. Counsel Whitmarsh moved it. Counsel Davis seconded it. All those in favor?
Well, I'm in favor, but just a point of clarification. Do we have, do we just continue on with this meeting or do we have to sign into a new meeting?
Uh, we'll, we'll just continue on, I believe, Ms. Bauer?
Yes, we'll just continue on with this meeting and the staff members will be dropping out of it.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you.
So all those in favor, opposed, meeting terminated. Thank you. So we'll take a couple of minutes while they switch over. And I know it's getting late. We're all getting antsy.